You're gonna watch yourself while you talk?
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, staff, roll call.
Attendance mode?
Okay, thank you. Second on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of May 29.
So moved.
Okay, a move and a second. Any discussion? None, hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay, this is an opportunity then for the citizens to address the commission on items that are not printed on the agenda. If you have any item that is not printed on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to new business. First item on the agenda is consideration of the 2015-2018 capital improvement program and a finding of consistency with the comp plan of capital improvement program and 2014 capital improvement budget. Staff.
Thank you. I just want to highlight quickly what the capital improvement plan and budget are and what the planning commission's role is here, and then I'm gonna turn it over to finance manager Chris Regis. The CIB and CAP is the city's immediate budget and five-year plan for making investments in publicly-owned facilities and infrastructure. Each year, the city manager makes a recommendation to the city council regarding the CIB for the upcoming year. The planning commission is responsible for reviewing the capital improvement plan, the CIP, and making a recommendation to the city council. The commission is also responsible for ensuring that the CIB and CAP are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Take it away, Chris.
All right, thank you very much, members of the commission. As everybody knows, this is the 2014 capital improvement budget, 2015-2018 capital improvement plan. I think pretty much everything that I've got on this next slide was just mentioned by Melissa. The projects are identified by city commissions, city departments, and possibly the HRA. Plumb report is generated, as Melissa said, by the city manager and presented to the planning commission. And then the planning commission reviews the projects based on the following consideration: that the proposed projects conform to the comprehensive plan. Then the CIB/CIP as recommended by the planning commission is returned to the city manager. The city manager then formalizes the CIB/CIP and includes it in the annual budget. The 2014 capital improvement budget has total project costs, as it stands right now, of almost $3.3 million. It's broken into three categories, as the entire budget is, into recreation projects, right-of-way projects, and public facilities. Recreation projects are typically $450,000, and the sole funding source for those recreation projects is always going to be special revenue funds, which derives its source from liquor profits, from the city's liquor operation. And some of the, as you can see, some of the projects there, the Lincoln Field loan repay, that's the payment of the internal loan that helped fund the Lincoln Field project. Park maintenance, which is approximately $50,000 annually. Community garden relocation, Taff Athletic Facility lighting improvements, Taff Lake Fisheries, Woodlake Nature Center parking lot reconstruction, Woodlake boardwalk repair, and then finally vets park play equipment and stuff. The right-of-way projects, almost $1.8 million. It's a continuation of the North Richfield Parkway project, which began this year, and then also the 69th Street stormwater reconstruction project. Then public facilities, we have equipment replacement, which is approximately $700,000 annually, which encompasses the replacement of city vehicles, city rolling stock equipment, things like that, and also our, the city's computer infrastructure, about 100. It's split out about 575, 125 between the two components. We have various utility improvements, and then also we have tuck pointing at the 6444 Lindale store, which just reopened about a month ago after going under extensive remodeling and renovation and stuff. This is kind of the last part of that project. The 2015 capital improvement plan has total project costs of approximately $10.5 million. Some of the recreation projects, there's money set aside for community band shell and also replacement of the mechanical room roofs over at Rink One. And the right-of-way projects, there's just one right-of-way project planned for 2015, and that is the Portland Avenue reconstruction. And then public facilities, we've got an interconnect with neighboring communities. And what that is, is connecting our water supply with another community. And in case ours goes bad or we have problems, at least we've got a backup source. Repaint the exterior of the Penn Water Tower, utility wellhouse roof replacement, and then $50,000 set aside annually for liquor operation improvements. 2016, total costs, approximately $19.2 million. Some of the recreation projects, community center air conditioner, Rink One dashboards, seal coat, the community center parking lot, and then remodel or renovate the restrooms at Woodlake Nature Center. Right-of-way projects, this is where it gets pretty spendy, $17.3 million. The biggest, largest there is 66th Street reconstruction, and that's the first of three years. That project is gonna span three years, the way it's planned right now. And then 76th Street West reconstruction. Public facilities, the water plant lime slaker replacement, which is a piece of equipment that is part of the water softening process over there at the water plant. Utility improvements, and then the fire SCBA replacement. That's the breathing apparatus that the firefighters use as they fight fires and when they go into buildings and things like that. 2017 capital improvement plan, $17.8 million. Arena parking lot fixtures in the recreation area, community center carpet. Replace the desiccant HVAC for Rinks One and Two. I asked what desiccant was, and that's the, I didn't get a very good answer, but it has something to do with humidification or dehumidification at the ice arena with their HVAC system. It must be distinctly unique to ice arenas, because I've never heard of it before. Replace the outdoor pool heaters at the pool, and then replace the carpet at Woodlake Nature Center. Right-of-way projects, again, continuation of the 66th reconstruction project, and then Nicollet Avenue reconstruction. There's $16 million there. And then in public facilities, it's just a continuation of existing utility projects and liquor operation improvements. 2018 capital improvement plan, almost $7.1 million. Again, the recreation, community center boiler, disc golf facility, outdoor spray pool, and pool floatable. And then finally, the completion of the 66th street reconstruction project. And then in public facilities, it's a replacement of water mains underneath I-35. 2018, this is where it gets really heavy. Total project cost, $47.2 million. Almost all of that, there is one small $40,000 public facility project with the utilities, but basically, I didn't show it on here, but basically, this is a large chunk of the plan. 65th Street reconstruction, 70th and a half street reconstruction, 77th Street underpass, Humboldt, Lindale Avenue improvements, and then Penn Avenue reconstruction. As you can see, I mean, with 66th Street, Portland, and then we've got Lindale, Penn, 77th Street underpass, there's a lot of roadwork going on in the next five years in the city, if it all comes to fruition and stuff. And a lot of the county roads, the city, I think, has to contribute like 20% to the county for that. So there's a lot, a lot of funding involved and things like that. That's all I've got for slides and things like that. I'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any or anything. I know I went through, went through it fairly quick.
Okay. Questions, Josh?
If you know. I know we just did a whole bunch of work on the ice rink. I thought it was a boiler replacement. I thought there was a roof replacement. I noticed that there were some additional items in there. Do you have any idea, is any of that due to just deterioration? Is that due to an upgrade because of the minor league hockey franchise? Do you have any idea?
What, the HVAC and stuff? I think that's one piece of equipment. I know they did a whole bunch, a whole large mechanical upgrade about two or three years ago. I'm not, evidently, this piece of equipment probably was not replaced at that time, or maybe it was deemed okay, but I don't know any other, I don't have a very good answer for you on that.
So relative to 2018, pretty much, you're just kind of getting that stuff in there so that you show that you've got it. I assume that not all those funds are there yet?
No, I mean, some of it's gonna be bonds, some of it's gonna be federal money, some of it's gonna be state grants, MSA money, county funds. There's a wide variety of funding for all those projects. And I think most of those, especially the county roads, have all been in there. I think it started two years ago, is when they first started putting those in there. And I remember the number back two, three years ago was 40-some million dollars at that time and stuff like that, so.
Okay. And up to that point, again, I think you feel pretty comfortable that you've got most of the other items covered up through 2017?
I think in terms of the funding sources, yeah. I mean, and it just depends, I mean, if council approves the projects as they come along and things like that. I mean, but I think 66th Street is gonna happen, and I think Portland will probably happen. But that's just my perspective. I'm not working over in public works. I mean, but I wouldn't think they'd put them in there if they didn't think something was gonna happen with them.
Okay. Other questions?
Chris, just to clarify, when you're talking here about general tax levy, it's generally property taxes? And user fees, are those tacked on to like?
User fees are things like the utilities projects. Just the utility operation will fund those projects, so the user fees that they receive in the revenues from people paying their bills and using the water and stuff, that's what's being used to fund those utility projects and things like that. And the general tax levy, for instance, the, what do I want to say? The equipment replacement, both the rolling stock and the computer infrastructure, that is just a general tax levy that we do to fund that. It's cheaper than issuing capital notes or things like that. There's no bond cost or anything with that. It's much cheaper to do it that way. So that's what the general tax levy is. If we're issuing bonds, sometimes with the bonds, there is a debt service tax levy attached to that. If there's not other funding source, if there's not special assessment bonds, but typically, if there's special assessment bonds, there's a split or some kind of a combination of special assessments and taxes. But the street reconstruction bonds, it's 100% tax levy.
Thank you. The other, just to comment on the outdoor spray pool, pool floatable. Just to note, both Rick and I were on the outdoor pool task force, but that is continuing with that project every five years or so. They are trying to add a new feature or improve the outdoor pool.
Yeah, I think they've also got pool heaters in there too, to try to improve that. And I know they're doing some painting, or they did some painting already this spring at the pool and things like that. The pool liner or the walls or something, they did that, so.
Right. But specifically, the outdoor spray pool is another feature, a play feature there. That was one of the commitments made when that project was done, that about every five years, we would try to do something that would add a play feature or something that would upgrade that pool, the recreational value of it. And I'd like to commend Jim Topitzoff for continuing that and doing something that does enhance that pool. And you too, since you were on the task force.
Well, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Let's see, we have a motion that has to be made? Okay. Okay. Chris, thanks for your input. I appreciate it. We have a motion and a second to recommend the 2015-18 capital improvement program and adopt a resolution finding the 2014 capital improvement budget and 2015 through 18 capital improvement program consistent with the comp plan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our public hearings. Number, item number two is conditional use permit to allow full-service restaurant with alcohol at El Taban at 6501 Nicollet Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. The city has received an application requesting a conditional use permit for a full service, that's food and intoxicating beverage service restaurant at 6501 Nicollet Avenue. Their proposed restaurant would occupy 4,200 square feet of the existing shopping center. That's Richfield Shops, and the primary changes would be internal to the building. The applicant, El Tejaban, is planning on moving from their current location across the street in the hub to the, over to Richfield Shops. They will also continue to operate in the hub with a new restaurant concept. The proposed restaurant would take over the space formerly occupied by Eastern Buffet, which vacated the space earlier this year. In 1997, Eastern Buffet was granted a conditional use permit for a Class II traditional restaurant without alcohol service. Full-service restaurants with alcohol service are conditionally permitted in the general commercial C2 district, so long as the lot abuts an arterial or collector's street. This requirement is met, as it abuts Nicollet Avenue. In evaluating a request for a conditional use permit, the planning commission and council shall also consider its compliance with criteria outlined in the attached document. The existing parking, one of the major issues, the existing parking at the shopping center is non-conforming and is currently 18 stalls short of minimum requirements. And that's including a reduction for transit proximity. Additionally, full-service restaurants are required to calculate their parking requirements separately from the remainder of the shopping center. With the addition of a 4,200-square-foot full-service restaurant, total parking requirements rise to 258 stalls. 218 stalls are currently provided on-site. Seeing this, staff required the applicant to submit a parking demand study for further analysis of actual parking demand at the shopping center. The applicant contracted Westwood Engineering to perform this parking demand study, including observation of actual parking utilization. The parking demand study showed that the site is adequately parked and would in fact remain adequately parked with the addition of a full-service restaurant. Furthermore, the peak parking demand of the existing shopping center currently, which is 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., does not conflict with the anticipated peak parking demand of the restaurant, which is anticipated to be 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. The parking demand study showed that the addition of the proposed restaurant would reduce the peak hour parking surplus from 80 stalls to 46 stalls, and that it would shift the peak parking, or the peak demand hour to 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The existing shopping center is non-conforming with regard to a number of other requirements, and city ordinances require that non-conforming sites be brought into compliance when possible. Staff evaluated the potential for parking lot screening improvements, but the parking lot actually already encroaches upon the city boulevard, and additional landscaping or fencing is not feasible. Staff finds that the fence along the eastern property line, as well as the extension at the north of the property, meets the intent of the trash enclosure requirements. There is, excuse me, there is additional opportunity, there is opportunity for additional impervious surface along the northern end of the building. However, limited sunshine can make it difficult to establish and maintain plants with a commercial neighbor adjacent to the north. Staff sees minimal benefit in requiring this. All requirements necessary for the issuance of a conditional use permit are met, and we recommend, staff recommends approval with the following stipulations: that an odor control system is required due to the proximity to residential properties. And some of these apply to the applicant, some apply to the property owner. That all site landscaping be maintained and tended appropriately. And that all parking stalls, crosswalks, must be striped in accordance with previously approved plans. That concludes the staff report.
Any questions of staff before we open up the hearing? Okay. Is the, let's see, is Luis here? Anybody like to say anything relative to the proposal?
Commissioners, my name is Luis Care, and this is John.
Please speak into the microphone up there so we can all hear you.
Commissioners, my name is Luis Care. I'm a consultant helping near the Tejaban.
And I'm John Hagan with Westwood Professional Services. I worked on the parking demand study, so I'm available for any questions you may have.
So any questions?
Hi, my name is Miguel Hernandez. I'm the owner of the Tejaban Mexican Grill.
Okay, thank you.
And we're glad that the staff is recommending approval, but, you know, they run a good operation, they're growing, and I'm glad that they're gonna stay in Richfield and continue growing at the current location.
Just a question I have is, do you plan to do anything as far as the facing of the building to enhance it a little bit and make it more vibrant per se?
For right now, the plan is only to put the letters on Tejaban Mexican Restaurant, but the interior's gonna be repainted. There'll be greenery inside the spaces, you know. But right now, for painting on the outside, not right now.
Okay, so not too much. Other questions? Question, Tom?
Your restaurant is going to be serving very different cuisine than the restaurant that was in there before. I was wondering, as far as the demand, obviously restaurants, it's a treacherous business. So I'm assuming your cuisine will be more to the liking of the public. You are expecting a greater clientele than the restaurant that was there before.
You know, Tejaban has reached a level of consistency in their service and food, the quality. And their consistency right now has created the following condition. Right now, sometimes they have up to 30 people leaving the restaurant because there's not enough room. And in order to accommodate the growing demand for their product, they saw it's a good business decision to move across the street.
Okay.
But their consistency is, I think, is gonna keep them growing still.
Okay, and?
Even though the economy's kind of hard, but they've been doing pretty well at that location.
And I congratulate you on that. But I'd like to reference again, Ms. Director Stark's comment once before that we're a victim of our own success. If this cuisine is that much more popular than what was in there before, what effect do you speculate that might have on parking demand?
Well, our capacity is 150 persons, and it's gonna remain at 150 persons.
Okay.
You know, it's not gonna increase. There'll be no overcrowding.
In the restaurant?
In the restaurant.
I'm talking about the success of your business and maybe attracting more people into the parking lot.
Well, maybe later, they're gonna have to grow and buy their own property.
Okay.
Instead of leasing, you know.
Okay, thank you. Just, Melissa, do you have any speculation on that? If this restaurant is just that much more successful, what kind of a pressure would that put on the parking? And, I mean, the parking analysis that was done, was done after the other restaurant closed. There seems to be a bit of a bias there in the data then.
Commissioner Ruben, members of the commission. That's true, the parking study was done after Eastern Buffet closed, but it was based on industry standards. It was also, there was also comparison to city standards. Even under city standards, it was anticipated that there would be 10 excess stalls at the peak time period. Under industry standards, which granted are lower than city standards, there was anticipated to be a surplus of 45 parking stalls at peak demand. So I think that there is wiggle room here. It is, it's not a case where we're asking you to vary the standards. It's a case where it's been fairly clearly demonstrated that this will work at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, a couple of years ago, the city of Minneapolis faced a semi issue. So what they did was, instead of requiring one vehicle for every 300 feet, they reduced the requirements to one vehicle to 500 feet, something to that effect. And it didn't create any chaos, traffic congestion. There was no problems. So it's a result of lowering the parking requirements when the city of Minneapolis tackled this issue. And they did it citywide.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Do you have one?
You have one more?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm always, always have questions.
Excellent.
The total time, operation of hours for this? Be?
10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., is that correct?
Yes.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Motion, cause public hearing?
Second.
Oh, is there anyone else? I'm sorry, besides the applicants? I'm sorry. Oh, come on right up. Please step up here, sign in, and your name and address. Thanks for reminding.
Good evening, council members. My name is Denny Suprina, and I live at 6521 First Avenue South. That's directly behind 6519. There's a lot of questions that we have that I'd like to answer. I've lived there for 40 years, and we have come up against this before, other times, when things, promises were made and businesses came in and things weren't honored, and we've struggled. The people that struggled with me are no longer with us, because when I moved into the neighborhood, they were in their 70s and 80s. And now we have all new people with children, so the battle begins again. And the things that we're very concerned with is the proximity of the buildings and everything to our residences. Literally, it's less than probably 70 feet from that building to the front of my property. And any noise that's made outside of that building just echoes and just flies right back. Any, you can listen to a conversation from my window from two people just standing out there talking. Now, there's some questions. Let me see here, what did I write down here? At nighttime, when they get deliveries, 11, 12 o'clock, these trucks pull up. They pull out the aluminum ramps, they slam down, they come flying down these aluminum ramps, walking with their two-wheelers and all the stuff that's going into the buildings. It makes a lot of noise. I mean, a lot of noise. We like to sleep with our windows open, especially in the fall and in the spring and everything else. And in the wintertime, the noise just seems to get worse. I don't know, it's like listening to a plane fly over. It just cracks. I understand, and we all understand, that Richfield tries to fill their occupancies for business and everything, and we appreciate that, and they've been doing a heck of a job. But at some point, you have to take into consideration the lives of the people that are living right behind this building. I mean, we are like right behind it. Whenever they come in with delivery trucks during the day, they block the whole thing. You can't drive through there even, because there's a semi parked out there. There's, how many employees would you employ?
It might be about 12.
12? That's 12 more parking spaces. Parking is an issue. What time they leave? 2:00 in the morning. A lot of times, the employees will park in the back of the store, or they go out there for their smoke breaks. And they make a lot of noise. We've battled that with the pizza place and the buffet. There's other things, slamming, you know, the metal containers, throwing their garbage away and clothes them because they have to be sealed for rodents and smells and that. These are all made of metal. They all make noise. I mean, this is like a regular noise factory. Try to get some sleep. You can't, because you're always listening to these containers. Now we have new babies, young kids. This, where they're located at now, it doesn't affect the neighborhood. Stores that close at 8, 9 o'clock, you know, we still, you know, they don't affect us all that much. But restaurants, the odors, we had a hamburger shop that moved in there years ago. And, "Oh, everything's gonna be rosy," they said. "Yeah, we're gonna put in filters and all that stuff." If it wasn't for Mayor Hamilton, they'd probably still be there, because the smoke came across that street in such a blue cloud, he sat in my living room and watched it filter right through the window. We went outside, I took my finger and just rubbed the grease off my siding. But this wasn't supposed to happen. And the same things, and I'm not against the restaurant. I've eaten there, I like the food and everything else. That's not, that's not the point. The point is, our lives are being affected greatly. And I've heard nothing tonight that even takes us into consideration. No impact study as far as the residents. Normally, you wouldn't probably have to do that, like say if they're in a shopping center or something like that. We're within 70 feet of that building, and now when you put cars out there, we're even closer. We are definitely, and what type of filtration system? We get orders from Vena, we get orders from the Country Buffet, and we had orders from the China buffet. But that was mostly in the wintertime, when air was, you know, we'd get smells mixed in the air. But we get all this stuff already. We don't want anymore. It's not, it's not a matter of just convenience for us. It's just a matter of the way we live. And placing this restaurant there would take away from us and take away from our, our new residents. They don't want it, I don't want it. Uh, I, I really would appreciate if you would take us into consideration. Uh, we have a lot more people involved, but this is summertime, people are gone, that would like to come to the meeting. So would you please take this all into consideration? And as far as that parking goes, no. They made those rules for, you know, for a reason. The amount of stalls you need, that's how many you need. Don't come in there with two hundred and eighteen when you're supposed to have two fifty. Well, we think it'll work. The restaurant, they say, is getting more popular, more popular. People come in, they stand next to the bar, they don't have to be seated, they can be standing room, serving drinks. Alcohol being served in that area, people leaving at night. We have people leaving from the pizza places, stuff, their friends pick them up, squealing their tires out of the parking lot. It's crazy, it's, it's a zoo back there. Adding this would only make it worse. This isn't make believe, this is all real. Everything I've said to you tonight is real. You haven't lived till you heard a fifty, sixty pound aluminum ramp slam down on the concrete, you know, at three or four in the morning. You know, I don't, I don't think either, any of you would appreciate that. So we hope you take all this into consideration. And, uh, we appreciate you taking and listening to us tonight. And all these folks back there, wave. Hey, hey, huh? They're all with us, and like I said, we have some more if we need to bring them in. So I, I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Any questions?
Melissa, is there any, uh, right call? Studies done when regards to liquor licenses? Because I knew, I know when the Eastern Buffet came in and, and other restaurants have been there, they didn't have liquor licenses. Was there a special, was there anything special in regards to the consideration of the neighborhood? Because that will bring in a different clientele at times for when there's liquor involved like that. So, uh, I really am in sympathy with what the neighbors are saying, especially about the noise. And, uh, I know I live in an area where sometimes the semis get lost round lawns and I have to deal with street noise like that. So I know what that's, it's a mess, and it also is dangerous because there's so much going on out there. But I'm particularly concerned about the liquor licenses. Are there anything, is there any special studies, or did you guys look at anything differently with?
Actually, in this particular case, uh, the restaurant could move in by right if they did not want to add liquor.
Okay.
Um, because there is an existing conditional use permit for Eastern Buffet, which does not run with a tenant, or, um, it runs with the land. And so, since that permit is in place, um, El Tejaban could move in as is, without any permits from the city, other than building permits and licenses, those things. Because they want to add alcohol, they have to come before you, and there has to be a public hearing. There'll also be a public hearing specifically regarding their liquor license. And I, I do not know the intricacies of the liquor licensing process. I know that they look at criminal records and they look at all of the things. But, um, no, the, the planning staff does not do a specific impact study because liquor is added.
What recourse does the, um, the neighborhood have when, like in the middle of the night, when these things are being slammed all over the place and delivery trucks? Do, the recourse is just to call public safety, or is there?
In the middle of the night, absolutely, that is the recourse, is to call, call the police so that they can go out there and enforce, enforce our noise ordinances.
Can a conditional be put on that, to make sure that's enforced? Uh, condition of, of granting this license, can it be? I'm just in really sympathy, because I know how close those buildings are back there. And, um, I can understand the smells, I can understand the noise. And if there's anything that, can we do as a policy governing body to restrict that in any way so that people can be protected?
It's enforceable no matter what, but we can certainly add it to the resolution just so that it is in writing before everyone, it's recorded. If the ownership would ever transfer again, it would, it would be there, um, right out in front. That noise ordinances shall be enforced. It sounds like this is a chronic issue, um, something that should be addressed with the landlord, certainly. Um, and staff can help to facilitate that. We do have contacts with the landlord, and if there are chronic problems over there with noise, we can certainly discuss that with them. Um, as for odor, just, um, one item, the gentleman brought up that you do smell the odors from Vena and, um, Old Country Buffet and from Eastern Buffet. These, um, the requirements that we have now for odor control were not in place when any of those restaurants went in. Uh, these are relatively new. It's only in the past, I would say, five to ten years that we have begun requiring odor control. And that's because, um, the neighborhoods found the odors offensive and annoying. So we do require them now.
But didn't the Country Buffet just go through a big reconstruction or something? Wouldn't those, those ordinances be in place for them? I'm just trying to, I can understand Vena.
The odor control is a condition, it's a zoning condition. So unless they need a new permit, a new land use permit, we can't enforce that.
The, um, the exhaust system from the, uh, China buffet, there was cleaners, steam cleaners and stuff out there here about a month ago or, or a while back, I can't remember. And they were cleaning out these stacks and stuff. And, uh, I, I went across them, I said, I said, "Look, pal," I said, "you know, it's, you gotta be finished by eleven o'clock, okay? So I'm letting you know," I said, "because this is really loud." They had their engines running and the steam compressors and everything out there. And I said, "Well, you know, you've been out here all day, what's taking so long?" He says, "Well," you know, he says, "they haven't cleaned these stacks in ten years." Where's our inspections on that? I mean, who enforces what they do? You know, I mean, are they supposed to be cleaned more often? He says, "They're lucky this, this whole building didn't burn down." You know, and I, and also I asked questions about that, you know? And then, um, what do they do for grease and, and rodent control? That's another big concern of ours. Um, I've complained and, and had the city come out and the health department take care of a few things behind that building. And until this year, Sergeant Brad from the police station, I don't know his last name unfortunately, is the only person that's taken it in forty years, has taken a personal interest in keeping the snowplows out of there after eleven o'clock. We've had to call, you have to wake up at twelve or one o'clock in the morning, find the phone, phone the police, tell them there's noise out there. And then they may come half hour or forty-five minutes later, an hour later, and then they're disappeared or something. And, uh, but this Brad has come in there and he's done a heck of a job. And he, he told them, "If you come back, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a ticket." So Brad, if you're listening, thank you. So, um, there was, uh, also the, the question of cleaning the restaurant. You know, every now and then, you gotta have your grills and everything clean. Is this done at night also, where they come in with the big pressure washers and all that stuff? That's another thing, that's another big noise. Uh, I, I mean, the list goes on and on, I, I can't remember them all. But I'm sure there's a few more that I've forgotten. People out there laughing, telling jokes, you know, uh, having their smoke breaks. You hear all of this stuff, two, three in the morning, four in the morning. If he closes at two in the morning, that's gonna be a heck of a note. Because there's nothing open there until two in the morning. I think we're a special case. We're special because we are so close to the backs of those stores. I mean, we are very, very close. And like I said, everything, every sound, it's a perfect sound chamber because it just goes up against that building and up. It doesn't filter away, or it's not absorbed by trees or brush or grass or anything else. It just bounces out and comes right back towards our houses. And I think that you should take special consideration because, I mean, legally, they go in there, move in like you were saying because of the type of restaurant that was in there before. We'd, we had a lot of problems with their employees, but then I had talks with the owner. That kinda helped. But other noises, this is a much bigger operation, much different operation with alcohol. That one way, street going down that way, people come out of that parking lot, a nicklet, could turn down there and just race right up there, going down the wrong way on the, on one way. I mean, because they're drinking alcohol. I don't know how impaired they are, not incriminating them at all, but I'm just saying is it can be another thing that can happen.
Okay, I think you have another person that wants to say something.
Yeah, this is Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Rittenhouse, I live at sixty-five oh-nine First Avenue, I'm Denny's next door neighbor. And I guess our concern is, is that we have children. And it's our safety concerns. Noise is here and there, and we can always call the police, but when push comes down to shove, we have small children, we have babies, we have teenagers. And bringing alcohol, especially at two AM, we're not talking about like a Don Pablo's or Chili's where they're closing at ten, eleven o'clock. This is two AM in the morning. This is a residential area. That brings huge concerns to us, our children and our homes. If somebody's coming out of there with alcohol in their systems, sweeping around the corners, our houses can get hit, they can back through the fences, our children can be hurt. Those are our concerns. We're not talking about a normal, everyday restaurant that's gonna be closing at ten o'clock at night. Are they gonna have live bans? Are, what are their alcohol laws? I mean, what are these situations that are gonna come up with us living directly behind? And those are also our concerns, is the safety of our children, our homes and our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm familiar with the operation of El Tejaban Rosa, and also the previous tenants, Taco Morelos, have been helping those different groups for years. And, uh, across the street, they don't emanate noise at two o'clock in the morning. They don't bring in equipment to start cleaning equipment inside at two o'clock in the morning. I don't know how the previous people operated the restaurant, but this is not a bigger operation. We purposely reduced the seating to a hundred and fifty on the floor plans that we drafted. That, that space easily handled, over two hundred people for the buffet. That was a much bigger operation, more employees. And all I can do is assure the neighbors that Miguel and Rosa will work with them, will work with the city to reduce the noise levels at nighttime. And this operation is no different than Don Pablo's or Chi Chi's or anybody else like that. Their reputation will follow them from El Tejaban across the street to, uh, Richfield shops. And if there's any issues, they can always talk to the city. They can come and talk to Miguel and Rosa, and we'll do what we can to reduce any noise levels. And as far as safety to children, uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's over-exaggerated that people are gonna be peeling tires at two o'clock in the morning. This is not the way these people operate. That's why I have to say, if there's any questions, they can call the city, they can come talk to the management, and we'll work with the neighbors.
Okay, is there any plans to have any entertainment in the building at all?
No, there'll be, let's say, on the front part, there'll be, uh, which is maybe another fifty feet away, maybe a hundred and twenty feet total away from the residential areas, inside a concrete building, brick building with, uh, there'll be no noise. If there's any karaoke, that noise will not go probably past the kitchen walls.
What, what kind of noise are we talking about?
Uh, just music, karaoke, uh, a small DJ, that's about it. We're not talking about the jumbo, we're not talking live bands coming in. That's why I, I think some of the concerns are over-exaggerated to the way and the reputation that these people have been operating.
Okay, and, and currently, is your restaurant open till, uh, or is the restaurant open till what hours?
Two o'clock in the morning.
It's, it is at the current location?
At the current, yeah.
Okay.
And the other big question or issue here is, we are serving Richfield residents. There's not gonna be a flock of people coming from outside neighborhoods. Here, right now, the demand is to satisfy the Richfield residents that are coming to the restaurant.
Okay, and what, what is the typical time that you get deliveries right now?
Uh, at the Tejaban, right now, all the deliveries have a rule that if they wanna do business with the Tejaban, all the deliveries have to come in by five to give them time to prepare all the vegetables, all the foods.
Five in the morning?
Uh, five PM.
Five PM, okay.
Yeah, there's no deliveries after ten. Or then, I don't know who would deliver trucks or food at that hour of the night anyway, even for a nation restaurant.
And, and staff, what is our ordinance, do you know what this ordinance currently says as far as deliveries?
I should know because I looked it up for the last meeting. And I apologize, I do not remember. I, I don't actually think that there are specific rules, that's what it was. There are not specific, there's no specific timeframe for deliveries. It's just that you need to be sensitive to the neighborhood. Let's read the minutes from last time.
Oh, great, that'd be great, I guess I could've done that myself, huh? Shoot, I'm caught.
There, there were, there are standards related to construction noise and things like that, and those vary depending on the day of the week and how loud they were. But there were no, um, specific regulations regarding delivery, um, traffic other than to say that it was not to be, um, overly noisy. Cars are not, trucks are not supposed to idle, uh, things like that. It was fairly, fairly big.
Given that this is a special situation so close to the neighborhood, is there any, anything that we could do relative to not permitting deliveries after X hour? Because it is a little bit more unique than a lot of the other residential pieces?
I, I think that you certainly, tonight, I think that you could do that for El Tejaban. However, this conditional use permit is for the site. And before you would do that, um, I would, you know, perhaps direct staff to look into that in time for the council meeting. But because I don't know the specifics of the operations of the other uses, I, I don't know that I could recommend that to you tonight without that information.
Okay, I just have one more question and then I'll let you go. So just one more thing relative to the odors and the new standard relative to odors. How much do they really take out of the residential air relative to those smells? What is the, what is the standard on that?
Uh, it, the standard is actually if it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. Some of the recent restaurants where odor control have, has been required, uh, I would recommend you check out Pizza Luce. Uh, you, if you walk in the parking lot at Pizza Luce or in, in Richfield Lake, you do not smell pizza.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Actually, we hear about this a lot, not just from, uh, these neighbors, but I think every time we have a, uh, proposal for restaurants or other businesses, uh, delivery trucks and delivery times seem to come up. And there are a number of businesses in, in this location that probably disturb them as well. It's not just Eastern Buffet or possibly this restaurant. Um, I would suggest that, uh, we look into the possibility of doing a study of this that would have a more, um, overall policy look see at delivery times for businesses and what we can do to obviate some of the problems for neighbors. One of the questions that I have, um, obviously, the, uh, notification for all of these neighbors was done. How many responses did you have in writing, or were you contacted in response to those notifications to the neighborhood?
Uh, staff received no correspondence, email or calls.
Okay, and, and obviously, there is somebody here articulating concerns and complaints. So it might be that that notification is not well-understood by those who receive it and how they can respond.
Okay, point, Tom, could we bring that up in the discussion points?
Sure.
And, and just leave this, or as, as pointed out, this is a public hearing, so we should probably let everybody go, and then I'll let you come back after.
Okay.
Okay? You want to step up to the microphone, please?
The only notification that we received at sixty-five oh-nine First Avenue is Denny actually coming over and speaking to us. We didn't get anything via mail, we didn't get anything via phone messages that were left, anything posted on our doors. We did not receive communication. Denny did, but we did not. Um, otherwise, we would have responded to that. So, I mean, just, the only reason we even knew about the town hall meeting is because Denny came to us and let us know. If we would have received that communication, we would have been here either way, but we also would have responded.
Staff, I assume those notes were sent out to the radius that you talked about in the minutes?
They were, they were sent out to a three-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius, so I, I am unsure why you did not get that.
Also on the notice, they said the address was sixty-five nineteen on your, on your sheet this morning, uh, this evening, it said- Also, on the notice, they said the address was sixty-five nineteen on your, on your sheet this morning, this evening, it said sixty-five, uh, sixty-five oh one?
Uh, sixty-five oh one is the legal address of the property.
Of, of all the properties.
Of all the properties. Sixty-five nineteen is actually just the suite number, but it's not the legal address.
And, and rebuttal to the gentleman's thing saying that this was over exaggerated. It's not over exaggerated. Every night, when you have five employees, not twelve employees, leaving the building, out there, all getting in their cars, laughing, telling jokes, slamming their doors at two, three in the morning, that's not exaggeration. You hear every door, every door slam. It's not an exaggeration, sir.
The child's safety, that's an exaggeration.
The child's safety?
Yes.
I, you know, anytime alcohol is served, I don't think you can have it, anything that says child's safety shouldn't be taken in consideration. Anytime alcohol is being used, you cannot assure me that each person that's in your establishment is leaving that place in a good frame of mind or knows what he's doing. Nobody can do that. And I can tell you that, there'll be instances. And I'll work with, you know, when we hear this, well, I'll work with them on the noise, I'll work with them on this. And then after everything is said and done, all the papers are signed, it's dotted, bam, they can do anything they want. We can come and complain to you over and over and over again, and then you'll say, well, we'll call them, we'll see what we can do, and we're right back where we started from.
Okay. I, I, I think we've got your point. And if there's anyone else that needs to discuss this, your opportunity at this point. But thank you.
I live at sixty-five twenty-seven First Avenue South. My name is Kim, and I guess I just wanted to make a point that you had said that they'll send, you guys could send other people out to do some more investigating as far as how the neighborhood dealing with the deliveries and the noise and all of those things. If you guys aren't there, or the people doing the surveys or the research on it, aren't there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, you're not going to hear everything that we do. You're not going to experience everything that we do. You won't experience the cars driving down our one-way street forty-five miles an hour. Those are the things that you aren't going to experience unless you live there. That's why we're bringing it to your attention and asking you not to allow this.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to address the commission?
Second?
Okay. Motion to second the close of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Okay, discussion.
I can just continue my comments that we hear about this frequently enough in proposals like this. And I think this particular instance warrants a little bit more investigation. And I think it warrants the establishment of a, an agenda item to look at this globally. Delivery times, delivery noise, things like that. There, we, we live in the twenty-first century. We ought to be able to handle a problem like this and obviate the discomfort that neighbors feel. I, myself, live down from a restaurant periodically, hear issues and problems, trucks coming in and so on. And I'm a fairly light sleeper, so I, I sympathize with them.
Josh?
Did you pull a, I guess, instant, incident history for this property? And, and can you give me any sense of what kind of incident activity we've got in the last, I don't know, couple of years?
We did not. They will do that as part of the liquor licensing process, but we, I don't even know that I have the authority to pull those records.
Okay.
So, I was just going to, I, I guess the, the authority segue is a good one, and that is that essentially, commissioning a citywide examination from a noise ordinance and delivery perspective is fundamentally the purview of the city council and not the planning commission, given that the noise ordinances are part of the, the civil citation area enforced by public safety.
Well, then, I'll amend my comments that we strongly recommend to the city council that they do exactly that.
Excellent.
Other comments?
Yeah, I.
Susan, I'm sorry.
Rosenberg, that's okay. No, I just want to say, I just, I want to also say that with the owner, I just take issue with you comparing this to Chi Chi's and to Don Pablo's. There's a big difference primarily where the location of it is. When you're dealing with people that are within seventy feet, it's a whole lot different than the Don Pablo's and the Chi Chi's that used to be in, in town. The other thing that I, I do want to address is, I'm not interested tonight in voting on this or supporting it one way or the other, unless we have something conditional on here. We have to have that in writing. I, I don't, there's not a whole lot here to keep, keep us from not approving this tonight, except for that. And I would like to see some kind of conditionals put on here, or I'll, you know, I'm certainly going to oppose it. Unless something like that is on there. And, and, you know, the citywide study makes a lot of sense because this is not an isolated incident, like I was speaking around, the delivery trucks going around lungs. I mean, they're, and they're, they get lost, and they're all over the place. So, it's happening all over the city, and Tom just talked about it because he lives over behind the pizza place on Penn. So, I think we, we do have an issue here, and as we get more and more business, and, you know, we all want business here, we all want that tax revenue. But we also have to reconsider of the people that have made this their home, because we do want to keep these people here. You know, we can't turn the whole place over to business. We do have to keep our homeowners in, in consideration on everything that comes along here. And this is a very special case, so I do want to see some conditions put on this, on these owners.
I'll allow one more comment if you have one.
Well, we, we already stated that their deliveries are always done before five PM because of the delivery of the food. We have no problem with more conditions being imposed, and we have no problem in the owners working with the neighbors. You know, like I'm telling you, this operation was much bigger than before. They had over two hundred seats in that restaurant. You know, now we, we've reduced it to, down to a hundred and fifty. That cuts down on staff. I don't know what type of relationship they have with the Eastern Buffet, but I think they should have been more, more vocal at that time instead of waiting till now to be vocal. You see, we're talking apples and oranges between these operators and previous operators at the restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no problem with conditions.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
I'm going to say something.
One more thing.
I drive my own restaurant right now for five years without any problems. When some people's getting drunk, or they're getting drunk in my restaurant, I don't sell more liquor. And I call a taxi to, they get home. But another, the owner, to see the, my customers drinking and drinking, and when they leave, they leave very drunk, you know? I always take care for my customers to not getting drunk in my restaurant.
He doesn't oversee, he watches out for the customer that they don't even talk to. And that's part of the liquor training that they have to, it's called best control services, who's the liquor trainer for their establishment.
Okay. Okay, John, sorry.
I just took a few minutes to flip through the, the city code and share with you some of the things I learned. And you have to understand, the community development isn't the department responsible for enforcement of the noise ordinance, so I'm, I'm just telling you the, the little bit I've picked up here in a couple of minutes. A lot of the concerns that were brought up are addressed in the code. They'd be, you know, more of enforcement issues than anything. You know, it's a whole bunch of things. It's, for example, snow plowing, you know, snow plowing is, can't be done anytime before seven AM or after ten PM. Again, that's an enforcement issue, though. The loading of vehicles says, no person shall create any louder excessive noise in connection with the loading, unloading, or unpacking of any vehicle. And there is, that has some of those nighttime hours associated with that, too. And then there was participation in noisy gatherings, so no noisy gatherings anytime after ten PM. So again, these are things that are in the code. How they're enforced, I, I can't speak to.
So basically, are you saying that, that the code addresses it already, and really for the council to address it in another way as such, as far as maybe time limits, et cetera? Isn't that still feasible and possible?
Sure, I think anything's open to continue to look at this. It is a, I would agree with Commissioner Rubline, that anytime there's a restaurant being proposed, we do hear these concerns from the neighborhood about what they, what they think are going to be the future issues. What we don't hear oftentimes is, is the people that testified at the public hearings coming back six months after the place opened and telling us whether those concerns came to, to reality or not.
Yeah. Well, my concern lies kind of with Susan's relative to the, not just this particular setting, but the whole complex per se, as it rests against the neighborhood. And, and from my perspective, it's unfortunate that you have to be, you know, kind of singled out as far as part of this, but I just don't want the neighbors having to put up with this. And I don't think, I think until that's addressed and some hours are put on to, to it to kind of stymie this, even though the enforcement possibilities are there, I don't think it should be weighing on that. It should be something that says set times. I'm still not real sure about the two o'clock either, and that's another one that kind of bothers me in that particular setting. That just kind of, I think, asks for trouble. And I, and I think as we, as we look through this, I, I don't know why two o'clock is the given time, but I just know if I was working the late shift, I sure as heck wouldn't want people out there till two o'clock in the morning, because you know that they're going to come out of there, even though they're socially drinking, they're going to be loud. And I just think, given the neighborhood, the way it is, I mean, they chose to live there, I get it. But on the other hand, we have to respect all of their residences also, so.
At this point, I, I would not vote for this. Well, I, I'm not going to say one way or the other at this point, but I would offer that the property be looked at, and maybe in, in the back of the building and along the street areas, maybe we investigate the possibility of putting in some speed bumps that would slow people down. The other is, is that if somebody's going to be open until two, two AM in the morning, and there is more than just a theoretical potential for problems closing at that time, that they would be required to employ some additional security measures or security service that could help enforce the ordinances, or, you know, if there are people spinning around or making noises with their cars and things like that, that that particular enforcement of rules and so on be incumbent upon the operator of the business.
And, and I think that kind of comes into play that the whole complex needs to participate in that. You know, I mean, that's, that's not us regulating them. It's the complex itself regulating itself.
Sure, but we have, we have a letter here from the landlord stating that they have no problem with it and so on, and they, they would be cooperative, perhaps. It's time to ask them, how cooperative are you talking?
So, just one point. I, I think ultimately the applicant deserves the chance to fail, rather than us as a group saddling them with restrictions that they may not have earned or deserved. So, I, I understand that the neighborhood has had bad experience with prior food tenants. We've already established that a new food tenant could move in without ever visiting this commission, could remain open until two AM, because that's not something that, from an orders of operation perspective, are part of this zoning activity. So, i- if we take for granted, or take for a moment that a new tenant could move in, stay open till two AM, without ever consulting us, the, to the extent that there's a problem with the facility, that's, you know, that's us, Rick, to your point, painting this applicant with the potential bad behavior of current tenants, or painting this applicant with the past behavior of prior occupants. And, and I don't know that that's an activity that we should be engaging in from a fairness perspective.
I, I totally agree with you. I, I mean, I, I get your point. The point I, I still don't like is, I, I don't like the fact that we don't have hours put on the, on the ordinances. And that still plays, plays in my mind. So, relative to the, relative to the liquor situation, I don't, we're no dummies. I mean, we know what that does. So I don't have to sit here and say that it's just their problem. I think it would be any business that comes in there, and any business that comes in there would be put under the same scrutiny, except they don't have to come before us. But the possibilities of that behavior at two o'clock in the morning is probably a lot less likely if there's no alcohol. And that's all there is.
Chair Jips. I, I agree with your point that the responsibility shouldn't be totally incumbent upon them. However, a conditional use permit has a length of time of what? A year? Whatever?
Conditional use permits run with the land unless the use ceases for an entire year.
And if this is conditional use permit, we can put a condition on that this applicant's use of the property, business and so on, be reviewed in some timeframe so as to put a little bit of pressure on them to make sure that all of the promises that they've made, they'll adhere to. Is that fair? I mean, if they have to come back and.
I'm sorry, are you asking me if legally that would be allowed?
Yes.
Yes, it would be. You could certainly put in some requirement that they either come, you know, that, that staff reviews their performance in six months.
I mean, that was one of the comments from the residents, that all these promises are made and, and so on. I mean, you've heard him as a council member, everything gets promised and promised, and then six months down the road, the promises are forgotten. So maybe in this case, we just institute just a bit of pressure and oversight on this and some accountability. And you're right, this gentleman and his business should not be totally encumbered by somebody else's bad, bad faith. But in, in deference to the neighbors, and they have a legitimate complaint here, they've lived through a lot of experiments with restaurants here. Perhaps it's just time to tighten it up a bit. And I certainly, I concur with you, too. We want business. We want business in this city, and we want to encourage it. But we've got to start being judicious about how we, how we welcome them in and, and the conditions under which we do that.
Josh?
Well, it, it sounds like the applicant's willing to, to come back because they're willing to make these commitments, but I, I think we at least have to be aware of the fact that we've got the gift that keeps on giving. The, the alcohol license requires the continuous renewal, and and that's going to be the opportunity for the council to look at that each and every single time they come for renewal, at which point they pull the police activity and the blotter and the, you know, all the things that have gone on. They do the random alcohol checks to confirm that. And that's where the bulk of these concerns are going to exist. You live next to a commercial establishment, or you live across the street from a church, as I happen to do, you expect certain things. I know that there's going to be noise coming from the church at certain hours, well, it used to be Sundays, now it's four or five times a week. And, and those are things that you come to expect. We can't eliminate everything, but certainly a lot of these concerns will get addressed and have to get addressed by the council, and it is inconvenient that you have to call the cops at one o'clock in the morning. Unfortunately, that's the best solution we've got, and that, you know, that's what we've said for the last three months, that if these things aren't being addressed and they're not working with you, your last and best recourse is, call the cops. And when they do, the, the city council gets that and says, yeah, we're not going to renew the liquor license. And for a business that, I'm assuming, generates quite a substantial portion of their income from their liquor sales, that's a giant stick. So, I, my encouragement is that you call the licenses. But Tom, to your point, if the applicant's willing, then I suggest that you move it with, with some conditions.
Okay, well.
Well, let me just.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so let's, let's try this. What if we postpone this for a month and allow the applicant to go back and talk with the whole complex per se? This is a point where we can actually make a change here and not even really have to do anything governmentally. Basically, what we can do is have them sit down and talk with each other, all people that own a portion of that complex per se, and anybody that's releasing or. that own a portion of that complex per se, and anybody that's releasing or whatever, and take into consideration, sit down and have a discussion with the neighbors, have a, have a heart to heart about things that need to change and things that need to happen in order for them to be coexisting and able to, to deal with the neighborhood. Other ways, we lose it. If we approve it now, we lose it. And, and I know it's a year later, granted, that's great. I wanted to see the business go in, honestly. But I want to make sure that the residents also have their say as to what has happened to them over the years, and have some input as to how that changes to make it better for everybody, and it's a win-win on all sides. So, what's a month?
Well, can I make comment? Is there a month? I mean, we've, we've been approached a number of times by other applicants who, oh, I've got to do this right now, I've got a contractor waiting, I've got this, I've got financing and so on. We don't know if there's some kind of a critical time issue for this particular applicant. Maybe they could address that in a moment. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that here you have residents who are saying, you know, we have this problem, it's continuous, we do call, and so on and so forth. I don't like making it a totally incumbent upon them either to have to do the phone calls at one o'clock in the morning or whatever. Yes, they can do that, but demonstrated by their comments that they don't feel that they received adequate notice for this action, you know, maybe they, there's a misunderstanding of the system. It's, it's not working well in that, in that particular, you know, part of town. And we have to do something to improve that. But yes, we can, I, I think we could make a proposal here with some conditions attached to it that would allow the, the applicant to go forward in his planning and execution of it, and yet still maintain some control over it.
Chair Jabs.
I have just 20 seconds.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to finish the discussion up here, sorry. Because we did have the opportunity at, at the public hearing, so this is an option right now for the, just the commission to discuss this.
We get a chance then to bring this up again because you guys have gotten off what you said. You're not, you're not answering the question you said.
Okay. We've already talked about that. That's been brought up. We talked about the, the noise. So, that's been brought up.
Chair Jabs, I, I would recommend, it's, it sounds like these concerns are largely about the management of the, of the shopping center as a whole. And that is something that you can put in your resolution. You can put in your resolution that the ownership of the property, the ownership or the management company is required to meet with staff to discuss ongoing noise issues and other reported violations. You can put as a condition that the certificate of occupancy will be held up until that meeting happens. In that case, it would allow this process to continue, but it would also guarantee that that restaurant will not open until the management company has met face to face with staff to discuss the concerns of the neighborhood.
I would assume that'd be staff and neighbors, correct? Or would it be, would it be a, a meeting between the two, or just the, the, I mean, because how does he get the feedback from the neighbors?
And we, we could work out how that would happen, absolutely.
Could the neighbors be included in all this, and maybe a representative, or one or two representative from the neighborhood that could speak, you know, because of the longevity of living there, probably with the older neighbors could be able, I say older because I'm part of you too. I wouldn't have said that a few years ago, but I, but we older ones, who has that history, we know what's, well, he knows what's going on, but he would need to be part of that, too, for me to be comfortable with that kind of resolution. It would have to be a, a triad of the owner of the restaurant, the, the management, and then the neighbors, but they would have equal voice. And maybe that could be facilitated somehow by the staff, or you could figure it out. But that would make me comfortable, at least, to go forward with this. That's probably my line in the sand for comfort for this.
Dennis?
All right, Chair, I just have two questions. We're supposed to be recognized before speaking, right? I just want to make sure.
Oh, excuse me.
That's all right, it happens. The question is, okay, so if this gets a class one classification with alcohol service, that alcohol service goes along with the property? No, that's what I'm trying to understand. It goes with the owner of the restaurant, and it's re-upped yearly?
Commissioner Schuler, the, that land use, yes, stays with the property. The actual liquor license that will come before the city council separately is specific to the owner of the restaurant. So, if this restaurant left, yes, technically, there would still be the permission to have a restaurant with alcohol service, but again, they would have to go before the city council separately to request the liquor license.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, other comments? Okay. Well, I, I too would, would be okay with the proposal that, that at least the discussion take place as part of the, part of the approval of this motion, okay? So, however we phrase that, in that, that takes place before the license is given out, I guess, is how it is phrased, would be good.
Right. I'd be willing to make the proposal, move, moving a resolution that the conditional use permit be granted pending the conditions that you have cited here, and pending the condition that they meet with you and resolve issues between they and the neighbor complaints that have been voiced here tonight.
Is, is that the occupancy permit, though? That...
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. And can we put a timeframe on that, too, of, within the next month, here? If we can do that?
Well, we certainly could. I don't know what the construction timeframe is for the occupant.
I don't want to hold them up.
I, I think it's fairly safe to, to condition that meeting on the certificate of occupancy. Let them know that your tenant cannot begin business until you meet with us.
Yeah, I'll give it that.
I would give it that.
Okay. So, Tommy, a motion?
On that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded.
Excuse me, Rick, could, could you, Melissa, would you just read that again, and, so that, I just want to be clear what I'm voting on. And, I mean, it doesn't have to be verbatim, but if there's anything that, so I know what points are being included.
Sure. There is a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a full-service restaurant at 6501 Nicollet Avenue, amended to include a stipulation that requires a meeting with the property owner or management to discuss concerns regarding chronic noise complaints prior to the certificate of occupancy.
And then the neighbors, I mean, it's a, is that an assumption, or is, do we need to be much more obvious that the neighbors will be a part of that?
I can add something that says that the neighbors will be part of that meeting.
Please.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, conducting close of public hearing, and by motion recommend approval of the seventh month interim use permit for off-site employee parking at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. Richfield Bloomington Honda has plans to expand their business. Earlier this year, Honda purchased a number of properties across the street from their current location to facilitate this expansion. On May 29th, 2013, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend a number of approvals related to Honda's expansion. The city council will consider the project tomorrow, June 25th. Honda plans a phased expansion that will require parking employee vehicles off-site while construction is underway. Honda is proposing to lease the city-owned property at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue for temporary use as an employee parking lot. Parking as a standalone use is not permitted in any zoning district, therefore, an interim use permit is required to allow this use. The purpose of an interim use permit is to allow that, to allow a use that may not be compatible with the comprehensive plan to operate for a limited period of time. Interim use permits are designed to allow a use that is presently acceptable, but that with anticipated future, with anticipated development will not be acceptable in the future. In evaluating this request, the planning commission and city council shall consider its compliance with the criteria, with the additional criteria outlined in the attached, in the attached document to the staff report. The council may waive ordinance provisions upon finding that the temporary nature of the interim use permit will eliminate the adverse effects the provisions were intended to prevent. The council must find that the temporary nature of this permit makes the non, makes the non-conforming use permissible at this time. Staff is recommending that, staff is recommending approval of a seven-month interim use permit effective August 1st, 2013, and terminating on March 1st, 2014. This will allow Honda to utilize the city-owned property at 7700 Pillsbury until their first construction phase is complete. Honda has indicated that parking space constraints may continue through the second phase of construction, and has requested that the interim use permit extend for one additional year beyond the staff recommendation. Staff, therefore, staff recommends the inclusion of two six-month extension options to be granted at the discretion of the community development director and terminate no later than March 1st, 2015. Redevelopment interest in the property would be a reason to possibly deny one or both of those extensions. That is the conclusion of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any comments before we go forward? Yes?
Yeah, I just have one question for staff. It's, in, in the years that I've been on the planning commission, this is the first time that the city has actually requested, because it's in this municipal property.
Correct.
The city has requested a conditional use permit or a variance from, essentially getting consent for a normally non-permitted use to use this as vacant property as parking. I, I don't have an objection to the, to the use. I, it just strikes me as a little odd that the city itself is looking for granting a...
Well, we like to follow the same rules as everybody. That's the, that's the answer.
All right. Did, did you pay the fee?
We, it came out of the general fund and back into the general fund.
All right.
Could you introduce yourself for the record, please? Are you satisfied with that answer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this, this is a public hearing. At this point, if there's anyone that wishes to address the commission, please do so.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All kinds of second on that, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Okay, any comments, questions, concerns?
Yes. Question. The clearing of the lot, any debris patching of the lot, there are some rather cavernous potholes there, I think, and so on and so forth. That's at the expense of?
That is at the expense of Honda, the applicant.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that. Could be considerable. And I also want to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about is the wood chip lot, not the old city garage lot. People do get confused about that, I think.
Great. It's the portion south of 77th Street.
Right. The wood chip lot.
Right. I, I don't believe young Matt is familiar with the term wood chip lot yet.
Tender age, he does not know that. The lot next to it, by the way, is called the Candlewood Sweets Lot.
Not for long.
Not for...
Noted.
Okay. I just, that was my only question. Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion, though?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
I would recommend approval of a seven-month interim use permit for off-site employee parking at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? All right, no, no. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's. Thank you.
On to, conducting close of public hearing, and by motion recommend adoption of a resolution denying an amendment to the planned unit development conditional use permit and final development plan for Cedar Point Commons that would allow construction of a class three fast food restaurant with drive-up facilities. Staff?
Thank you. The city council approved a final development plan for the Cedar Point Commons project in June of 2006. The project included approximately 370,000 square feet of building comprised of a Super Target, Home Depot, full-service restaurant, bank, and seven smaller multi-tenant buildings. Four of the smaller buildings were proposed for the northwest corner of 66th Street and Richfield Parkway. These buildings were not constructed along with the rest of the site in 2007, and the areas remained vacant. Property owner Ryan Companies has applied for a major amendment to the approved plans in order to reconfigure the area west of Richfield Parkway for a McDonald's restaurant. The north half of the vacant area would remain vacant for the time being. In 2004, the city adopted a redevelopment master plan for the Cedar Avenue corridor area. The plan called for a mix of commercial and higher-density housing that would be more compatible with airport noise and would be centered upon a greenway. A resolution approving the Cedar Point Commons project was approved in June of 2006. An amendment to the approved plans must meet both code requirements and the requirements of the Cedar Point project resolution, unless modified by the city council. There are a number of criteria to approve a planned unit development and the associated conditional use permit. Those are all discussed in the attachment to your staff report. I'm just going to go over a few of the major items from which they are requesting variations. As you all know, planned unit developments are intended to encourage the efficient use of land and resources and to encourage innovation in planning and building. PUDs provide flexibility in the application of dimensional requirements, density, and land use. If the proposed development is well-designed, it can be successfully integrated into the neighborhood. PUDs are expected to provide superior design and/or benefit to the community in exchange for the requested flexibility. I, I'm not going to read directly from your staff report, rather, I'd like to summarize the, the issues that staff has with this proposal and why we are ultimately recommending denial. You can see from the illustration that is up on the screen and also in your packet, the way that the building is oriented on the site. The front of the building, where the doors are located, what I would consider the front of the building, the main doors are located on the west side. Just west of there, of the parking lot, is Mount Calvary Church. The alternative front to the building would be the north side. There's an additional door there at what would be the northeast corner. That door is facing north. The, what I would consider the backside of the building with the drive-through facilities, and there's a rendering of these facilities that's available as well, is facing 66th Street, and the drive-through window is facing Richfield Parkway. Some of our requirements for the code state that front yards can only include things like fencing, ornamental outdoor furniture, parking areas, signage, and landscaping. Drive-through lanes are not permitted in front yards. There is a front setback requirement. This requirement is actually amended fairly recently, within the last two years, specifically to draw buildings closer to the streets, to bring doors to the street. And again, the intent, the intent of this regulation is for buildings to front on the street. While the dimensional requirement is met here, the, the back of the building is 60 feet from 66th Street, however, this is what they're showing to 66th Street. So, we feel that the actual orientation of the building is wrong while the dimension is met. Again, buildings are required to be oriented so that at least one principal entrance faces the public street. That is not the case here. And PUDs also must be designed to create a desirable and unified environment. When looking at this building, and actually, John, if you would switch to, there you go, another rendering, these are the proposed materials. I also have material boards here that we can bring out. In terms of a desirable and unified environment, what we're looking at here is the Cedar Point Commons development as a whole. One of the requirements of that resolution is that any new developments use similar materials, the same brick color, and be designed to look like a whole rather than a standalone piece here on the other side of the street. Again, the proposed building turns its back to both 66th Street and Richfield Parkway. The pickup window and the order station are facing the community, nothing, and those are the same items that will face the shops on the other side of the parkway. Bike racks have been included, however, they're at the main entrance, which again, is facing Mount Calvary Church rather than the community. The developer does have some illustrations to show that there is a lighter colored stone, like the oyster tile. like the oyster tile there, in the Cedar Point Commons development. But if you go out to look at the development, the primary color there is that very dark, almost purplish brick. It really is the primary color that you'll see out there with some accents of lighter colors. The facade of this building, although perhaps in this case it would be good that it is not facing the street, is almost entirely the white or oyster color, which does not, we do not feel, is cohesive with the rest of the development. Staff has requested substitution of a metal tile or a gray tile, however, McDonald's, staff has, has indicated that that is not a possibility. Staff's also requested to see other potential designs but has not received anything. McDonald's has varied from their corporate standards. As everyone here in Richfield, Richfield knows, the design of the McDonald's at 66th and Lyndale is not a standard McDonald's, and we feel that to fit into the Cedar Point Commons, they would need to do, they would need to make similar accommodations to match the remainder of the development. There are also internal circulation questions. The proposed parking stall design would encourage vehicle travel in both directions while lane width accommodates only one-way travel, and that is an issue that could potentially be worked out with the traffic engineers. We just need to change the orientation of some of those stalls. In terms of parking, the applicant has requested a reduced parking requirement based on their own operational knowledge and experience. And as we discussed with Taco Bell and in a study session a few weeks ago, staff has typically supported these reductions based on, if a retailer is prolific in the area. City requirements would call for 67 parking stalls here. McDonald's internal calculations call for 44 parking stalls. The proposed plan includes 49 stalls. That is 18 short of city requirements. And the, the magnitude of that discrepancy concerns us a little bit here. For queuing space, the 70-foot queuing space dimension is met on these plans. However, McDonald's staff has indicated that up to 70% of their customers can come through the drive-through, and in that case, we, we have concerns that queuing will stack in front of all of the spaces that are directly adjacent to the building. There are some concerns with the level of service at the intersection. The Public Works Department has indicated that the proposed driveway radius, unchanneled exit, and median changes are not acceptable. No change will be permitted to the Richfield Parkway median unless median channelization is added to the exit site. You may, you may have heard of that type of exit referred to as a pork chop, and that's to make sure that people exiting the McDonald's would not be making a left turn to go north. So, we're not sure if there is another design that would work with the semi-truck traffic, delivery truck traffic that McDonald's requires. There are a few other minor issues. They do not meet the landscaping requirements for parking lots. The lighting plan thus far, we have not been able to completely review because it did not meet requirements, and also the lighting was too high when we reviewed that. Overall, we feel the proposed plan is not in substantial conformance with the regulations of the Guiding District. The applicant has oriented the site to meet, as you can see indicated on this, on this plan, the, there's a minimum setback for drive-through service windows from residentially-zoned property. And so, they've oriented the site to make sure that all of the drive-through equipment is far enough away from the residentially-zoned property. However, the applicant has now created a site that is at odds with just about every other regulation that we've put in place over the last few years to, to bring buildings and their frontages up to the street. Finally, PUDs and the accompanying conditional use permits require agreement and conformance with the goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan. This site is zoned, or I'm sorry, is guided for regional commercial and allows for a wide variety of commercial businesses. One of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to accommodate business growth. It is to accommodate business growth, though, that respects the values and standards of the city of Richfield. Development is expected to be responsive to the surrounding neighborhood, and the proposed development, in staff's opinion, does not meet those requirements. The proposed building turns its back to the community for the Richfield Parkway, which abuts the proposal, is identified in our comprehensive plan as a future greenway corridor that will traverse most of Richfield and extend north to the Minneapolis border. The applicant has included the proposed trail on these plans. You can see it here on the eastern border. However, the, the drive access that is required for the truck maneuvering makes for unsafe bike and pedestrian crossing. Our Public Works Department, the Three Rivers Park District, and Hennepin County have all indicated that they have major concerns with that access point. So, to summarize, in order to, to approve an amendment to the Cedar Point Commons development, the council must find that all requirements detailed in the attachment to your staff report have been met. The purpose of PUD regulations, as I stated, is to provide an opportunity for innovative and creative development while assuring that the development will complement existing neighborhood character. Staff feels that the proposed McDonald's could be built in any location in the Midwest. It does not complement the existing portion of the Cedar Point Commons development or the surrounding neighborhood. The proposal conflicts with numerous requirements of the zoning code. If the commission would like to recommend approval, and if the council approves, there are a number of issues specifically related to access and circulation that must be addressed in order to provide a safe environment. And ultimately, this, this area of land in, in question has been vacant for approximately seven years, and the city does want to encourage redevelopment of vacant sites. So, the applicant is here, and staff will be happy to answer any questions from you.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this point? Okay. Does applicant wish to address us? This is a public hearing.
My name is Chris Groat. I'm with the Linquist Firm here on behalf of McDonald's. Trish Roth, the engineer of Kimberly Horn, is here also, and so is Mark Campmeyer of Ryan Companies. I'd like to first address some of the staff's concerns with regard to design and the notion that this isn't reflective of the development that it's being put into. And then, Trish will address some of the engineering issues that are of concern, such as the parking, queuing, and the like. And then, Mark will address some of the issues that have been just recently brought up with regard to the trail and the like. So, first, to address some touchstones. We're in agreement that the resolution, it's Resolution Number 9772, provides the design criteria that this development should meet. And that resolution is attached in your staff report, so you can, you can follow along. I'm just hoping that the commission will allow me to walk through this a little bit and take a critical look at this, and take a critical look at how this proposed development fits in with the rest of the development. And I think objectively, when you apply the objective design criteria that's in the ordinance, and when you look at, excuse me, that's in the resolution, and when you look at the ordinances, you'll come to the conclusion that, hey, this building really does fit in, and it matches up, and it achieves the goals that, that the city is looking for. Let's talk about the resolution, first of all, and what you have to, what you have to do with that resolution. The resolution states that the design of the future building should be similar to the existing buildings, and it also talks about the materials that you should be using, that they should be similar in color, they should color coordinate. Now, we're going to take a look at some, some of the pictures so we can see where, how these two buildings, or how these buildings will all fit together, and how they all actually really do satisfy the design criteria. It uses building materials including metal panels, glass, concrete block material that looks like brick. And in fact, in many instances, the proposed building is going to use materials that are an upgrade from what's being used as part of the greater Cedar Point Commons development. Now, there's not a requirement that they have to mirror the buildings of Cedar Point, and that's important because the notion was, this was a development that was going to occur over time. This resolution was authorized in 2006. Here we are, 2013. There is, there was in the resolution an acknowledgement that over time, materials might not be available. As a matter of fact, we couldn't even find the material wards that reflected the materials that were used. So, what I'm going to do is, you know, what we did, is we matched up the materials, and I actually went out to the site to hold the materials that we're going to use up against the existing buildings, so we can use that as our template, so we can actually see that the colors and the materials and the design actually do complement and match up and reflect what's out there today. The design of the building is very similar to the existing buildings. There's a nice industrial feel to it. The materials are of great quality, even in excess of what's being used out there. Ultimately, color coordination is nearly exact, and I do want to talk about this issue about the orientation of the building. The development is oriented to face itself, so the buildings face each other in a harmonious fashion, so they're all looking at each other. It's part of an integrated development. This building will do nothing different than the buildings that are sitting out there already, which all back to 66th. So, now, staff recommends the denial of the requested amendment and conditional use permit, stating the proposed orientation and material color selection are not in keeping with the existing portion of the development. We respectfully disagree, so let's take a look at what we have for the proposed site. So, John, you offered to help me with some focus if we need it. Thank you. Okay. This is the proposed design of the McDonald's that is before you. I'd like you to take a look at the information that you're seeing here. All right. First of all, let's talk about the design elements. The design elements include lots of metal. Metal features all the way around the top. It's a strong feature of the building. It also uses metal highlights all the way around. There's turnbuckles from holding up the, the screening to the windows. It has that great industrial look. The brick color is also there. The brick color is going to precisely match the brick color that's out in the, out in the development as it is. And the McDonald's is also going to use this oyster facade color that actually is part of McDonald's design. It's part of their trademark design to the front of their building. And in a little bit, I'm going to show you some of the other buildings out there where they all get to use their trademark colors, the colors that are associated with their business in a fashion to distinguish themselves from the greater development as a whole, to draw people in and, and use their colors to, you know, place their stake in the ground and show their identity. Now, the oyster color isn't white. Compare it with the McDonald's, actually, the, you can see the sign there. That's a nice bright white there. The oyster color, and we have the samples in front of you, is this matte finish, and it has some gray attributes to it. It's, it's actually not white, and I think that's important because staff seem to have viewed this as a stark contrast to the rest of the development. So, as we go along, I'd like you to pay attention to this nice, this nice oyster color here, because as you see, this is a color and a pattern, a block size, that is used a lot in the development as it exists today. I also wanted to show you the other side of the building. Now, for our purposes, let's, we're going to have a little issue about what's the front, because there's a number of views, I think Trish, or I mean, staff indicates that there's a side of the building that they would call the front. Let's, let's just focus in on this side of the building. This is where the McDonald's labeling is, and let's identify this as the front. The building, this part of the building, is oriented to face all of the other buildings into the, in the development. It's facing north. You'll see the brick here. I'll show you how that matches the brick in the other buildings. There's also accent brick around the drive-up windows. Again, lots of metal features to give that industrial feel that I think you've been looking for. Moving a little closer to taking a look at the facade on the front of the building with the oyster-colored tile, again, it's not a bright white tile. It's a, it's a color that you're going to see matches well with the buildings around it, and importantly, block size is very similar to the other buildings that we'll be taking a look at. And again, take a look at all the metal that's being integrated here and the metal features around, because you're going to see those reflected in the buildings in the greater development that I'll be showing you in just a minute. I do want to take a moment to talk about... Hang on here. Thanks, John.
Let's see if I can see it.
Thank you. Do you want to zoom in just a little bit more, John? Beautiful. Thanks, Control Room. The city ordinances are written in kind of an interesting fashion in that front of the building isn't defined by any architectural element that's attached to the building. What's identified as the quote "front of the building" is merely a fraction of, reflection of what street it abuts on a corner lot. So, this is a corner lot, and the ordinances decide that the shorter frontage that is abutting the street is going to be the front yard. So, just de facto, because of the way the lot is shaped, the shorter side is on 66th, and that's what's going to be identified as the front yard. All right? Now, this front yard, as proposed, is going to have signage, which is allowed in front yards, and it's also going to have, well, parking is allowed in front yards. So, that should, we believe that parking includes asphalt surfaces for motor traffic and motor movement, motor vehicle movement. So, within the greater feel of what's allowed in a front yard, this isn't, this isn't so different. This fits in with a front yard. Now, agreed. This isn't the front facade of the building where the main entrance is, or the advertising is, where the McDonald's is, but this isn't out of character with the rest of the development. It's similar, and it complements the rest of the development. So, let's take a moment to take a look at the building materials. And I really want, I really think it's important because staff's point was that the materials are not consistent with what's there. This is that brick that you see before you over on the chair, and that brick is held up against one of the walls of one of the buildings out at the site. Notable differences, McDonald's isn't going to use concrete block. It's not going to use concrete block that's intended to look like brick. It's going to use brick, and that is the main color that will cover most of the exterior, and that matches what's out at the current site. The accent, remember when I pointed out, the accents around the drive-through windows and on the side of the building? This is the accent brick color. That's a precise match of what is the accent brick, actually, this yellow color, we'll call it, is a fairly primary color in the greater development. Interesting here, you can see just by circumstance that the color matches well in the bright sun and actually matches really well in the shade. I'd like to focus, focus a little bit on this, this oyster color that, that staff says is out of character with the rest of the development. We went out and took a sample of that color and matched it up with the existing oyster color out in the development. That's in bright sun, and I'm going to show you some larger pictures of how you'll see how these pillars, these posts, fit into the greater development, and it's used quite frequently. Here's an example in the shade as well as the sun. Here's an example in the shade as well as the sun, where this happens to be part of the wall of the Caribou Coffee on the corner, that the colors match up, we would say nearly precisely. And again, remember, this isn't a cement block product that McDonald's proposes to use. It's actually a ceramic tile product that is of higher quality than cement block. So the matchup is precisely consistent. One of the points that staff wants to make is that this oyster color is a minor color in the greater development. And McDonald's use, to use it as, let's say, the primary color in its main facade on one end of the building is inconsistent with the development. Now, remember, the notion is it's supposed to be similar to the development next door. This is one of the design sheets from 2006 that are referenced in the, that are actually referenced in the ordinance, not the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution that the design of future buildings is supposed to be similar to. Look at this stretch right here. This is that oyster color we're talking about again. That's, you know, just by thumbnail estimate, 60% of the facade of that building, glass, the oyster color, and some metal elements. McDonald's satisfies that. Also, in existence, at the development itself, the oyster color is predominant in this entire strip mall that, and I suspect most of you, if not all of you, have been out there, but this is a strip mall that connects between Home Depot and the Target. So this entire facade is that oyster color that we're talking about. So indeed, the oyster color is a primary design element out in the greater development. And also here. Again, these are those posts that we were, we were comparing that oyster color to. They're used all over the TCF Bank Building. And as a matter of fact, you'll find these bases and the coordinating lower facades of the building in that oyster color all along the development. The point being that it isn't a minor color in the development, but indeed, it is a major color that's used throughout the development in the, the wrapping of the buildings themselves. I mentioned earlier that the oyster color of this facade is actually part of McDonald's trademark design elements of its buildings. There are other buildings out there that are, you know, also allowed to use their own specific colors to promote the entrances of their buildings. Here's Target. Lots of Target red all the way around the entrance to their building. That Target red color certainly isn't found in the other buildings, but it's allowed so Target can distinguish itself and let everybody know, this is Target you're walking into. Target also has the opportunity to use many of its own design elements and its own colors, the bright white paneling, the Target bullseye, and the Target bright red in its, its corner designs. Also, Home Depot is out there. Home Depot is using, you know, well-known for its bright orange facades. You know, you may like that color, you may not like that color. But Home Depot gets to use their orange to feature their building and make everybody, let everybody know that when you walk up to it, it's Home Depot. And McDonald's is really asking for nothing different. So when you look at the materials themselves, the proposed McDonald's fits in quite nicely. It has that industrial look. It has the metal. It has higher-quality stone materials, such as the brick. The colors are a precise match, and consequently, we just hope you'll take a closer look at that and see that we just have a disagreement with staff about whether this fits in and is similar to the existing building. I'd like to talk about the orientation of the building too, because that's super important. You know, this building was designed to face the rest of the development. And the critique now is that it's uninviting because it has its back to 66th. All of the buildings have their back to 66th. This is the, this is a stretch of 66th on the south side of the entire development. All those buildings have their back to 66th. And I, I'd ask the, the commission to note, the access doors are plainly visible, the utility services are shown here. McDonald's is doing something completely different on 66th. It's off of 66th. It's not right up abutting to 66th. Here's the look from the other direction. Again, all of the backs abutting 66th, all the way right down, actually, if you look down here, this is where the proposed McDonald's would go. So McDonald's is doing nothing different than the rest of the development. I'm actually, you know, it, it's kind of a catch-22, right? Where would McDonald's be if it flipped? Staff could easily say, "Well, you're not facing the development anymore, so you're not in harmony with the development. You're trying to stand off alone by yourself." That's not what McDonald's is trying to do. It's trying to be part of an integrated development as, as required, as it's required to under the resolution. So again, look at all the utilities that are sitting right here facing 66th. McDonald's isn't going to do that. And let's see if I can't flip back to what the 66th Street side is gonna look like. So, I would offer that objectively, this side of the building facing 66th, with its signage, which is allowed under the ordinance, with facilities for the movement of cars, like asphalt and parking, which is allowed under the ordinance, actually provides an opportunity for people going by to see into the greater development. It actually invites people in as opposed to the rest of 66th, which is walled off by the backs of the buildings themselves. So, in conclusion on that part, I would just say that I think when you look objectively, and you look at the samples, and you look at the pictures, that the proposed development actually is in harmony with the existing development. And it meets the objective criteria of the resolution. And that's what, that's all it really has to do with regard to design, building materials, look, feel, color. It's all there. Now, I do want to take a couple of seconds just to talk about...
Okay, I'm just going to, because we're getting a little bit long here. I think, we'll give you another five minutes, and if you have other items that you need to address, I think then we should, because I think you had some points too. So...
We do, and, and I appreciate your indulgence. You know, it was a lengthy staff report. And we want you to know that we're trying to address it in a super-serious fashion, because, you know, we respect the process. We did talk about the orientation of the building and the like as actually being consistent with what that development's supposed to be. They're supposed to face each other. There was a notion that McDonald's hasn't provided alternative designs to staff. I'd have to respectfully disagree. McDonald's provided three alternative facade designs. There was a, a, a natural stone design, and then a stucco design. But we really got, you know, hard pushback from staff with regard to those other two designs. 66th and, 66th and Lyndale, the McDonald's over there, that's a leased building. So when McDonald's finds a location that it deems like, hey, you can move in, it might be favorable, they can't, they can't decide what to do with an existing building. They don't have that flexibility. You have to kind of deal with what you move into. So that 66th and Lyndale facility is a leased building. This would be a McDonald's-owned store and a McDonald's-built store. The only other thing that I would say is that there's a notion that this doesn't conform with the comprehensive plan. Now, I'm sure you can check with the city's council, and, and maybe the commission recognizes that. An allegation that a building doesn't comport with the aspirational goals and objectives of a comp plan can't legally support a denial. But in this instance, I'll say, or I'll submit to you that fast food has already been approved and already been confirmed in the resolution that we're looking at as being completely consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the city's comp plan. The whereas clauses of the resolution say it right there. There's fast food already out there. Chipotle, Subway, Noodles &amp; Company, Caribou. They're all out there already. So the, the use of fast food here, takeaway restaurants, that's, that's already been deemed by the city council to be consistent with goals and objectives of the city's comp plan. Thank you for your indulgence. Trish will take care of some of the engineering that you'd like to talk about, and I'll be available for questions too, if you'd like.
Evening. My name's Trish Rothie, and I'm with Kim Lee Horn, the civil engineer on behalf of McDonald's. Like Chris mentioned, I just wanted to touch on a couple of the more hard engineering-related topics, like the parking and the circulation, the landscaping. So to start off with the parking, we, you know, I'd met with city staff several times, and they'd indicated, a prolific user like McDonald's knows what they need to park at better than a generic city code for parking requirements. And so we did submit a parking study. The city requirement for parking, 17 spaces per 1,000 square feet. Just in my history and around the metro area, dealing with restaurants, 10-0 is kind of the generic ratio, 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet. In that case, this site would need 44 parking stalls. Just comparing it with some of your neighbors, your neighbors to the north, 12 to 15 stalls. Neighbors to the west, 40 to 44 stalls. We don't want to overpark the site. I mean, I'm sure everybody can agree that you don't want to have any unnecessary impervious area. And of course, we want to, we want to serve the site as best as we can. You know, rather have a patio than have additional parking that may be unnecessary to the actual functionality of the McDonald's. So what we are currently proposing for parking is at about 11.5 ratio, 11.5 stalls per 1,000 square feet. Again, over the 10-0 ratio, which is very typical for restaurant use. Furthermore, on that note, you know, we, we are trying to work really well with the city and make this a very pedestrian-oriented facility. You have the bus stop on 66th Street. We have an additional sidewalk on the west side of the site by a, a staff comment to try and work with the church. The church has a gate from their property, so that way they can easily access the property without having to go around. The trail, which Mark will speak on a little bit later, the Three Rivers Park District Trail, that is now integrated into the site plan. We've got site pedestrian circulation from at least three different ways around the site. So we want to, we want to emphasize the, the pedestrian and the drive-through elements of this, that there's not going to be as many people just coming to park to eat. On a note, Melissa mentioned the, the landscaping, and we, we can work with you guys, and we can definitely get that landscaping up, because of a matter of calculation, how the interior parking lot landscaping was calculated, and the material that was in those landscape islands. So we will definitely work with you to get that number where it needs to be. On the note, as far as traffic and circulation, it, it's kind of a catch-22 in this case too. Right now, we're trying to maximize stalls to make you all feel comfortable with the parking reduction that we are requesting. We have looked at the option, and actually, at one point, we did have the option of having angled parking in these stalls here, so that it promotes the one-way traffic. It is, it is great for circulation. It is preferred in many ways. It's not as efficient from a space, a layout standpoint, so we would lose a couple more stalls. So doing that to help improve that circulation and the intuitiveness of a one-way drive would be a trade-off for a couple more parking stalls. In regards to the median cut on Richfield Parkway, we have, in, in response to these comments, looked at having kind of a pork chop island right in that area. We, we will work with you guys, do whatever we can to have some sort of pork chop island in there to channelize the people exiting the site, to make a right-only. We'll have to do some mountable curb in areas, because of course, there will be delivery trucks that are entering the site. But we think there's some solution we can come up with to help channelize and, and force everybody to take a right coming out of the site, to help alleviate some of those concerns. Because of course, the safety of any pedestrians, especially those using the trail, is priority for all of us. And then on that note as well, with the, the delivery traffic, you know, they're not going to be delivering during peak times. McDonald's is a well-oiled machine. They know, they know when their deliveries can come that aren't going to inhibit either their operations, and, you know, coincidentally, the peak times of, say, breakfast and lunch. Dinner, peak times, are when you have people out walking on the trails as well. So you're not going to have a lot of delivery truck movements at the same time that you would have your peak usage of a trail. On that same note, I know there's concern about the, the delivery truck and the trail, turning movements for the truck. Well, any place you're gonna have a commercial use along the trail, you know, from this point up to 63rd, or anywhere else in the city of Richfield where you've got a commercial use on a trail, you're gonna have a truck that's gonna have to cross for delivery purposes. And again, McDonald's is the well-oiled machine, and they'll be delivering at times when there's not a high-peak use there. So that's just a couple of my points from an engineering side of things. Be more than happy to answer any questions y'all may have. But otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mark, if he would like to say a few words.
I'm Mark Campmeyer with Ryan Companies. My comments are gonna be extremely brief, because everything's been covered. I wanted to talk a little bit about the trail. That is new information to us. We've been working on this deal, or I have with McDonald's, and had conversations with staff. They've been very friendly and worked with us for approximately two years now. And the, the Greenway Trail is something that was very new to us. We had on all the initial plans, a sidewalk that goes along 17th Street, or Richfield Parkway, as it's gonna be called. And so McDonald's has been good enough to, to implement the, the walkway into their plan. And we will agree to give it up. But without McDonald's, or without you guys working with us on McDonald's, I don't know what's gonna be here, so I need to reserve that land for future development, to have it available in the event a building needs to encroach on it. So we're willing to work with you on the trail now, but without McDonald's, coming in just sort of at the last minute, taking the land from us, is something that we weren't aware of, that I, I was not aware of. And it encroaches on what our future ability are to develop the property. So I just wanted you to know that, that McDonald's has done a really good job in, in including the trail, trying to make the Three Rivers part of this. But that, that without the McDonald's deal, I don't know how, how the city expects to just come in and have us donate land. I mean, in my, in my view, it would be a condemnation, or a purchase, or something like that. But with the McDonald's and the way it fits in, and if it fit into a future development, we would work with the city as well. But at this point, the way it's been worked in, we're comfortable with it. I just wanted to make the quick point about the trail and the traffic that people use on it.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, Chair Jeps. I just want to address a couple of things. Well, just kind of to start out with the tenor, you know, the, the comment was McDonald's could have started out by flipping the building around, but then there would have been some issues with the proximity to residential, and staff could have said deny on that basis. You know, that kind of, that kind of insinuates that staff has a vested interest or had some interest in, in telling you to deny at the very offset of this, and that's definitely not the case. Staff has nothing against McDonald's as a use, or fast food as a use. You know, in our opinion, this has not been an adversarial relationship, and we've been trying to work together. The issue that has arisen is that there, there is not any one reason we're, we're recommending denial. It's a cumulative issue. There's so many, so many things that all of them piled together brings us to this cumulative issue. And there was, there was the picture, and the photographs aren't up here, but of the backs of Caribou and, and those. While he's... While he's looking for that, just a couple of other things, you know. So, I guess my question to the policymakers is, you know, how might you have viewed this visual differently if, in addition to the backs of the buildings, there'd been a service drive aisle, some parking spaces, and this building was actually much further from the street than what's shown here? And it is a little different. I do agree, these buildings do have their backs to Sixty-S sixth Street. It's in a different context. They also face other things. These buildings face TCF Bank. These buildings face the Payless Shoe Source. They face an interior kind of court area. The proposed McDonald's may very well face something in the future on that north end, but right now, it doesn't. There's nothing there. The idea of a planned unit development is it's things being done in concert, and this is one piece that's being done in isolation. And then, in terms of, you know, staff had asked on a number of occasions about other layouts of how the McDonald's could be oriented on the site. And, you know, I guess my conclusion is that McDonald's genuinely can't, there's no other way to put it on the site. You know, this is the only orientation that makes sense. We never did see any other site layouts, and I think that was the reason. Melissa may have other additional comments. I'm not sure.
I'd just like to ask a quick question of staff. Based on all the information we received this evening, how much of that did you already have when you went to your conclusion, as far as the recommendation?
The additional pictures that you were showing tonight.
The presentation tonight, yeah.
We have seen those pictures before. We saw them at our administrative review committee meeting, and we have discussed those. We have also taken our own pictures on the site, and I think that the material colors can vary significantly based on what light you're looking at them in. I went out today with these boards and took pictures next to Target and TCF Bank, and got a very different impression of how they would compare. I would also go back to the pictures that John, or I'm sorry, that Chris had of the backs of TCF, or I'm sorry, of the backs of Caribou, et cetera. And when you look at that, there is not that white stone. We do truly believe that that is used as an accent very sparsely throughout. And when you look at the Cedar Point Commons Development, you primarily see that very dark, almost purplish brick, much like the brick that's used in portions of this building. And that's opinion. They have their opinions. We have ours, you know.
Well, I'm just curious on this particular one. I mean, I kind of came in here tonight pretty much, you know, opposed, let's just say. I'll just put it right out there. But, you know, having hearing the other side of the story, it makes me a little bit less opposed as such. So, in the discussion that you've had, usually you guys have done this so well, and it's been such a concerted effort that you've worked for agreement and worked to make things happen. What hasn't happened here?
I would say that we have had a lot of back-and-forth, and staff did go away from that administrative review committee meeting, having seen those same pictures, thinking, oh, we should go out there, too. And we did. We went out and compared. And like John said, this is a cumulative effect. You know, it's not that we would recommend that you deny something based on one person's interpretation of a color versus someone else's. It's all of these things built together. I would say, from a planning perspective, to face the back of this building and the drive-through facilities and the window, the drive-through window, to both Sixty-S sixth Street and the rest of the existing development, is just not good site design from my professional viewpoint. That makes it very hard for me to recommend to you and to the community that this is a design that is oriented to invite you in and to be supportive of the Greenway and the other development that's out there. And then, there are a number of those little cumulative issues that just start to pile up along with it.
Are there other questions?
So, I was struck at the amount of discussion regarding the oyster color, but then I recalled that it's not the oyster arches, it's the golden arches, and it's Home Depot's orange color and Target's red color. So, in fairness, I understand that there could be a difference of opinion regarding the color boards, but oyster isn't yellow. But I do think, though, in looking at the layout, there really isn't an orientation that isn't a compromise in one direction or another. So, to flip the front-facing portion of the building toward the rest of the development means that it gets pushed back closer to the residential area. The drive aisle portion gets moved to the rear, and then the drive-up window happens to be within that radius from a residential area. I'll be at the residential area as a parking lot, not actually residences. So, I don't know how the property, or any feature with a drive-up, could actually exist on this property in substantial conformance with the, really, the conflicting requirements. But, I mean, just from an opinion perspective, candidly, looking at the building, yeah, it looks like a McDonald's. It doesn't look like the rest of the development. The colors sweeping generalizations aside.
Let me just ask this. You know, I think this is time just to question, but we can come back and have that in our discussion relative to that?
There you go. You're doing what I do.
Yeah, so...
Telling people that we should do what we're supposed to do.
Well, I'm just, you know, just coming back so we can bring it into discussion. So, if we wish to close the public hearing, I think that's the opportunity.
I don't think so.
But if... I'm sorry. We're just having discussion up here at this moment?
You were talking about...
I did not. I said, this is discussion.
Okay. Sorry.
Questions of staff?
Sure. Other comments relative to that? But I think we need to keep our comments, questions to staff, and that, and then we can move forward.
In regards to our lovely roundabout there, which now is pretty heavily used, people exiting off of that, the number of cars going into that queue, that's the only entrance into that complex off of the roundabout, off of that area. How do you speculate traffic will be affected with this turnoff into a drive-through, backup, so on, winter access with the occasional snow that we get, and so on? Safety overall there?
Well, Commissioner Rublin, I think it's hard to speculate. I really want to talk to the Public Works folks, but here are some thoughts. One is, right now, the way that this site is designed, all of the traffic really has to go to the roundabout. When Richfield Parkway is constructed later this summer, or next summer, much of the traffic that's currently using the roundabout, coming both directions, will be able to go up Richfield Parkway and into South Minneapolis. So, we actually, the hope is that when Richfield Parkway is constructed, there will be less traffic difficulties in this area. So, that's something that speaks, I think, in McDonald's favor, or in the favor of whoever's going to develop here.
What about the pedestrian walkways? You kind of have one there at the south end, yes, there?
Yeah. The pedestrian walkways, you know, for anybody that's driven through there while they're pedestrians, they're, you know, a roundabout has a lot of benefits and a lot of negative attributes, and it is difficult for the pedestrians. You know, I think that introducing the trail in here, hopefully, that will bring greater attention to where the pedestrian accesses are. I, you know, I think the concern here is that that's a wider-than-typical drive apron to provide the turning radiuses that their semis need, that if you were to narrow that up to a more typical width, that lessens the amount of interaction between vehicles and pedestrians.
The shrinking of the parking lot concerns me, because there are people who may be parked over at Target, wherever, and it's all, let's say, kids over at McDonald's, and we're already parked here, and they can see that there are an indifference to you saying that, you know, parking better. I've witnessed where people walk over instead of moving the car. That's the only pedestrian walkway that they would access across or down to this McDonald's.
Right now, I suspect that's something we can work on if that, you know, was an issue. That's something we hadn't thought about, and quite frankly, that's the hope in a mixed-use development, is that people aren't getting in their car to drive to each individual use.
Right, right. And then, this is just also an observation, what you're proposing here with this pork chop, whatever, to prevent people from going north, or whatever, is somewhat similar to what we're experimenting with at Menards, where people are...
Commissioner Rublin, it is, except that the one at Menards is being redesigned, because it has been ineffective.
It's not working.
Correct. So, it will be even more channelized to make it more difficult.
So, we're looking more at a filet mignon rather than a pork chop there?
You're right.
And they're talking about a surmountable pork chop, so that the semis can get over it. And I'd want to talk to the traffic engineers about, you know, why that wouldn't allow, you know, an Escalade, or anybody else, or a Civic, or whatever, to go over it. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. So, anyone else that wishes to address the commission?
I do apologize for mishearing you. I could have sworn that you were closing it. My name is Mark Soderberg. I live at six four four five Sixteenth Avenue South. I happen to be on the half of the block that everybody in Richfield said was never going to get split, and was. Hence, the new development for the bike path and trailway usage on Richfield Parkway, Seventeenth. First, I have to say, I am one house on one street. Take that for what that's worth. McDonald's, is my understanding, there's four lots. You're taking the first two on the Sixty-S sixth Street side, and there'll be two more on the Sixty-Fifth side. You are not planning on developing that half for entrance, exit, driveway. Most of my concerns have been met. My issue with that vacant lot was completely with Ryan's company not securing their lot and letting people literally baha through it. We get twenty-two hundred cars a day going through there before they put the barricades up. If you think that's going to go down when they put a McDonald's in, your problem is taken. So, your concerns about the roundabout traffic, the concerns about the pork chop that doesn't work at Menards, I was going to bring that up. Thank you. I'm glad to see the process is working. To me, this is like voting. If I don't do it, I can't complain about it tomorrow. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Could I take one second? I'd like to take the opportunity to leave some of the pictures that we brought with tonight with the commissioners to take a look at. And if I could approach... I wanted to let you know that when we went out to try to do color comparisons, just like with staff, it was important to us to try to get a color comparison in bright sunshine and also in shade. And so, I think you'll look at the pictures, and you can see that they show that, that the color comparison is right on in both sunshine and shade. Staff also made the point that the predominant color out there is this brown. What the predominant color out there is, is that sample brick red that you see over there. And that's the color that, if you look, there's the close-up that's held right up against the wall of that, we'll call it red. But I also gave you a picture of the Target, and that red is all along that Target, too. Yes, there's darker, browner accents out there also, but, you know, trying to figure out what's the predominant color out there is kind of difficult, because it depends on what building you look at. And I did want the commission to really take a look at any time fitness, because that oyster color is all along there. And the facade and the plans that allow for this to be, if you're concerned about it being one of the predominant colors, the plans themselves allow for it to be one of the predominant colors. And we thank you for your time again.
Anyone else wishes to address the commission? Okay. Tim?
Tim Carter, General Manager at Richfield Bloomington Honda. I'm also involved with the Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to make a general statement to everybody here that this development that Ryan has put together has proven to be phenomenal regional draw. And I've been pounding the drum of how are we going to help this city grow after the recession, and the road construction being completed. I think we're on a good path to bring a lot more business in here. McDonald's, in this case, I think, is a very good thing for us. I know there's other talks about other levels of restaurants coming in, and there's plans for that, but the market's not here. This is a market-driven response that we have to be attentive to, and Richfield, I think, can benefit greatly by McDonald's coming in. And I just want to make sure that, from a business standpoint, that you work as hard as you can to try and find a resolution to some of these things. These things do not seem like they cannot be fixed. So, I'm in support of this regional draw and promoting more business, and I think McDonald's has done their studies, and they see that it's not just Richfield bringing business in. It's going to come in from Minneapolis and a lot of other places. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion, a second to close the public hearing. Any... What?
No.
Okay. I think, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Questions? Comments? Your turn.
Well, before you stop me, I was going to suggest that the, there are, I think, instances that we've all seen where McDonald's has had a presence that has very closely matched a larger facility that they're in. Choices, aesthetic choices and materials aside, I don't know that anybody would look at this and mistake it for being consistent. I don't know if, for me, color alone is enough to say, no, this doesn't work. But, you know, it seems like the most challenging part of all of this is that the layout, I don't see any way that you could get any drive-through facility on this spot without making some judgment-type accommodations.
Other comments?
Commissioner Rosenberg.
That's okay. You know, I was on the city council for sixteen years, and the biggest hits we ever took was when we were short on parking. And that's what really concerns me here with, if we say we need forty-four spaces, or forty... You know, I know McDonald's thinks they know best, but we know Richfield, and I think we have to really, really take a hard look at this. And this parking needs to really be examined, and if that'd be... You know, aesthetics are one thing, colors and oyster colors versus purple and everything else, it's all a matter of taste. But the main thing is parking, and we have taken some really pretty hard hits because of it. And you guys know it as well as I do, what we've taken for parking. And we need the parking spaces. I think we need them, and we really need to take a look at this and see if there's some kind of design feature that we can do to accommodate more parking. Because I'm like Tim. I mean, we need the business here. I like to see the businesses. But I do think we have to think about, because of the criticisms, as well as the frustrations that's going to come along if people can't find parking. And we need to take a good look at this.
Sure, Joe.
I'm actually going to have some questions for council. I'm actually going to have some questions for council. I'm looking at this photo right here, which presumably is the whatever side, the 66th Street side with the drive-through, am I getting that right? What I'm looking for is, I see brick and oyster tile. And what I'm wondering, can you please explain to me what the other two sides of the building are going to be made of? Or are proposed to be made of?
And let me grab a couple of photographs, if I may, and thanks for letting me bring this back so the people at home can see.
And while you're grabbing those, I'm going to throw out some other things that maybe aren't as significant. You know, some of the other things that we talked about in these developments that we haven't even touched on tonight, for instance, the, you know, I'm looking at the box light that we have, you know, fought against in several other developments. I'm looking at the lack of the trees in the parking islands, and I realize that that was brought up. But these are requirements that we've got for this development as well as developments all over the city because it's the way we want this city to look. And this developer has asked us to move away from that so that they can fit this particular facility on this particular site. And we were looking at the Pillsbury redevelopment and the comments that were made, it's, you know, does this square peg fit into this round hole? And in this particular instance, I'm looking at this and I'm starting to gather a feeling of, this is the square peg again. And maybe this particular development of this particular size and this particular orientation may just not fit on this site. It's not a, we don't want it here, it's not the colors don't work, but it maybe just doesn't fit here. And I think that that's...there are maybe some solutions to make it fit here, you know, perhaps increasing the overall site package that they're looking at that would maybe allow some additional parking, that might allow some additional move-around. And just two seconds, we'll get to that because I do want to understand that a little better. But the other two things I took away, like Commissioner Visicki, I did learn that the Golden Arches corporate color was oyster, not yellow or gold. And the other thing is that they have got phenomenal semi-truck drivers that the business just down the street on 66, the auto parts store, couldn't possibly manage to fit any of their trucks into. So, I thought that was good news. I'm going to suggest that that auto parts store maybe use the same driving company that McDonald's is using. Okay, to the aesthetics of the two sides, please.
A couple of points.
With regard to the aesthetics of the sides, and you're right, the color, the McDonald's
yellow, is still the McDonald's yellow, but it's designed as a package, right? McDonald's wants its buildings to be identified and recognized as McDonald's. And that part of using this oyster color facade, or the stone facade, or the cement facade, which were the options, is all a part of that package. My understanding is that McDonald's trademarks that look, so it is them, and it's intended to be them. With regard to what the sides are going to look like, here's the side with the drive-up windows, and this would be facing what the parkway would be. So, importantly, given the efforts to get the brick color right, we weren't able to get the brick color right and then get it into the renderings.
I'm really just kind of looking for material, I'm looking for what the other...
Absolutely. So, where you see brick here, this is brick. Now, the ordinance and the resolution directs that future buildings will use similar materials, and at the time, they were insistent on a cement product that looks like brick. McDonald's is going to take it one step better. It's going to use not a cement product, it's going to use real brick. So, this will...all these facades will be brick.
So, that rendering then?
Sorry, I'm not turning that on. So, the rendering that you've got, that you grabbed for me, that shows the...that's not a reflection of the material that would be used in this particular facility?
No, that is a reflection of the material, just the colors are slightly different. So, where you see this brown here as the accent color, that's going to be the yellow that you see over there. So, the metal is still present, the metal panels are there, this is the oyster tile around the front of the facade, but this main part brick here color will be that brick color that you see over there.
So, I'm crystal clear, all four sides of this building will consist of oyster tile or brick?
Well, here's the other side, okay? You're correct. All four sides will have the tile, and then here's the back. Will have the tile and the brick, and the metal, that's important to the development. And then, of course, it'll have, you know, yellow McDonald's accents. I'd like Trish maybe to try to address some of those issues that you brought up about square peg, round hole, because I think McDonald's has put in a substantial effort in doing things like making this pedestrian-friendly, and there have been some trade-offs. We're trying to put in more seating, wondering if we could use some Tree Island spaces to put in more outdoor seating and the like, so maybe you could help out with some of those issues that we're dealing with.
Sure. So, really quick, as far as the square peg and the round hole, we have looked at the site in laying it out other ways, by flipping the building, by having the drive-through away from 66. Doing that creates other problems, both operationally and against city code. So, for one thing, if you did that, you'd have to double, if you were going through the drive-through, you have to go around twice just to be able to get into the queue for the drive-through, go around, pick up your food, and exit the site. So, obviously, huge inconvenience to customers, not ideal for operations. The other thing with that is it creates the need for more impervious area, takes away from parking. So, the most we were able to lay out was 38 parking stalls, the most with that layout. And then, the main thing, and the whole driver for the orientation of the building was trying to keep the drive-through elements as far away, or at least outside of that 150-foot radius, from the residential-y zone property. So, again, that's the driver, that's where we have settled upon the plan that we're on now, and from a customer standpoint, circulation, you're able to drive in, take a left, circulate the site, go through the drive-through, pass the parking, and come out. So, it's the most convenient. And in regards to, I mean, I guess I spoke on the truck traffic coming in and what we could do to help alleviate that, so if you have any more questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But again, it's just a lot of the setbacks. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned is there's a 40 or 60-foot max building setback. So, we're trying to stay, to keep the building pulled at least 60, within 60 feet of the property line on 66 and Richfield Parkway. Flipping the building, and then, you know, you'd want all your parking in front of your building so it can go in the front door, well, then that pushes the building out of that 60-foot max setback. So, there's a trade-off flipping it either way, and we feel that this operates the best, not only for McDonald's, but also for the community and with the pedestrians and the bicycles and everything else that we want to accommodate on the site.
Okay. One more item I need to address relative to this is that, we'll come back to the, what do they call it here? Sorry. The driveway radius, unchanneled exit median changes are not acceptable, as far as public works is concerned. How do we address that? What's your proposal relative? I want to make sure I got that clear, so...
Can you say the beginning part again, please?
Yeah, well, I think that's the left-hand turn, too. I think it's all that access into the thing. So, it's like, no change will be permitted to the Richfield Parkway median unless median channelization is added to the site exit. So, what's the proposal to get, to help that out?
So, what we would propose now, and we'd have to go back and again look at truck movements and work with city staff, what would be a pork chop island in that area? Most likely would have to be surmountable curb, again, for the truck movements coming in. We could also look at keeping this curbed here and doing some sort of surmountable curb that, you know, a semi-truck could still function for deliveries, but it would highly discourage your Honda Civic or anybody else from taking a left out of the site in two different ways.
Okay, other questions? Comments?
Sure, Joe. Again, I think most of my concerns center around the entrance and exit to this property. As far as aesthetics and so on, quite frankly, we've heard from all sorts of developers, oh, my building is unique. Oh, this is the first time we've done this. Well, you know, we heard that with Lifetime Fitness, you go around, it's kind of the same thing. We heard that odd item from CVS, you look around, it's pretty much the same thing. As far as McDonald's, I understand branding, I understand the need to do that. I don't think that that's really what draws people in to your location. Pretty much, people are familiar with McDonald's. I think you could actually have pretty much a blank building with one single M on it and people would find it. And as far as, we can't do much more in terms of unique design. I seem to remember being in Sedona, Arizona, and I think the Golden Arches there are actually turquoise. Okay, so, things can be done, okay? CVS can do things different, visit Brookline, Massachusetts, CVS is different there. You know, it can be done. We have architects that can change things. Personally, I don't think this model works in this location. It's not a model that, as far as I'm concerned, presents its unique dining experience by any stretch of the imagination. However, that said, that ununique aspect of it is pretty in keeping with that development. I don't find any of Cedar Point to be really that unique. Home Depot is Home Depot, Target is Target, I mean, there's nothing that's really outstanding about that Cedar Point development, other than it is a development. I'm wondering why this particular location can't support anything other than this type of a restaurant? Can you, sir from Ryan Company, can you address that issue?
That's a million-dollar question. We have marketed to every restaurant group. There's a pad on the corner of 66th and Cedar Avenue that's designated for a sit-down restaurant. I've marketed that for seven, well, actually, eight years now, nine years, since the project before it was even built, pre-marketing. The sit-down restaurant category right now is not in expansion mode. It's not the higher end and the lower end of a restaurant, quick-service restaurant, noodles, Chipotle, those kinds, they're prolific right now, they're expanding. People aren't spending money in that category. The Applebee's that I did 15 deals with over the last 10 years, Chili's, that I did a number of deals with in this and other markets, they're just not active. There is also a conception of this project, when you look at it as a retailer, you look at the airport and you say, this is half a moon, this is half a circle. Where's the balance of all these houses that I need? It's taken seven years for people to understand and learn that it's like a cattle shootout out of South Minneapolis right into this project. Target does over $85 million a year, their average store is 55, so the site is great. The problem is, is that, number one, a lot of retailers that are in the categories that we need for a fancy sit-down restaurant are just not active. And I don't know if that answers your question, is that kind of what you're looking for? I've marketed this project to every conceivable retailer in the country that does these kinds of projects, and they're just not active right now.
What are their objections to it? I mean, what is it that...
Their category's not making money. Ruby Tuesdays, a lot of these, they're scrambling to try and stay even. They're not seeing increased sales growth, their operators are not interested in putting more money into something that's not generating the kind of income that it used to. So, the fast food and the lesser expensive options for people seem to be what consumers are spending their money on. And so, what I'm stuck with, as Tim said eloquently, is what the market wants, what the people of Richfield want, what they're actually spending their money on, is what I can generate here. And that's why we have noodles, that's why we have Chipotle, he's doing $1.3 million. They expect it to do about a million. Noodles is very excited about what they're anticipating to do here, and Subway's always done very well. So, those less expensive alternatives, healthy but less expensive alternatives are what's really active right now in the market because that's what consumers are responding to.
And yet, we have spillover parking at Pizza Luce. You could not entice a restaurant to that level to this location?
There's another issue with this, too. I suppose at some point we could...independent operators are a difficult bunch. We spent about 11 years pursuing this site. We purchased, I think, in excess of 43 homes, a couple of apartment buildings, a lot of you are probably familiar with that. Our land basis is massive. So, in paying the carry for the last seven years, which is not anybody else's problem but our own, we recognize that, makes it very difficult for us and our lender to make deals that are favorable with other retailers where they can come in and they can actually afford to make a profit in a reasonable amount of time. So, we've got some economic limitations that prevent what we're trying to do here, and we really did try and lay out the McDonald's and the, how do I say this, the use, we felt fits with the area, young kids, mothers that are busy going to Target and picking up in the, the whole traffic scenario around there, too. I might add that Target generates between 7,500 to 14,000 cars a day, and that turnaround freaked me right out. I've never done one before. And I didn't do it, I worked with a team of people who did. I've never seen anything operate so cool, and I'm a huge believer in that now. So, I think the traffic may be a concern that I'm not as well-educated as a lot of people here obviously are, but I was pretty impressed with the way it operated here so far. That's inside.
Tom, I would also add that a couple of years ago, I tried to put something in that particular space, and at the time, we were looking at $25 a square foot plus cams, and that was at the point that I was doing this, well above what our western suburbs and a little more, and, you know, five-to-10-year-old developments where we're getting at the time. So, I'm assuming that that's not the number we've got now, but, you know, that didn't help us either.
Relative to the market, the market is undoubtedly going to change once we get the Richfield Parkway done, we'll have better traffic from Minneapolis. Would that be a fair assumption?
That's the whole purpose in building it, yeah.
Okay. How do you think that kind of a development would affect your ability to market this particular site?
You mean the additional access from 17th? On Parkway? The additional access? Oh, we're very excited about it. It's another outlet, it's a relief valve, it's another way for people to get here without having to go on Cedar Avenue at certain times of the day when there's peak traffic. It's a back way for neighborhoods to get out. I think the gentleman here mentioned earlier how there's no way to get out of there. Now, with the Jersey barriers on some of those streets that run perpendicular to Parkway, I think it's a great relief valve.
Just a relief valve, not...
Well, I think it's going to take a lot of time for people to learn to use that. No, it's a little better than a relief valve. That may have not been a real good characterization.
So, you're saying that this Parkway development would not have an effect on the number of people that could come in and utilize an upscale restaurant in that area?
I guess I...it will ease traffic, it will help access, it will improve access, as far as whether or not customers are willing to spend more money at that point or because of easier access, I, you know, it will open it up to more people, and conceivably, more people would mean more income variation, I suppose, but better access means better ability to market, yes, for me to market to other users.
Is there still spaces open by the Target and Home Depot and stuff?
We've got, yeah, we just did, anytime fitness, as everyone knows, I think we've got 3,500 square feet left, 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
So, between those four deals, we've been about 15,000 square feet in the last several months.
Okay. And along the way, have you had any other proposals that you've entertained as far as that site?
Food users...oh, as far as the McDonald's site?
Yeah, the whole section.
We've had interest from automotive-related uses that we've not brought forward because they're very inconsistent with the school, they're very incompatible from a noise level and from an operational standpoint. Everyone uses them, everyone needs them. We've had discount tire, we've had a car wash, an upscale car wash that we didn't want to bring forward.
Yeah. Good move.
Yes. Aside from that, we've had more interest from small restaurants, Panda Express, a lot of those, I could probably line up three small restaurants in line there all day long, but I don't think that's what we're trying to do here.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, go ahead.
The term industrial, an industrial look, was used several times by you. I just want to tell you that that actually is not the kind of look that warms my heart. I would like to have more greenery, I would like to have something with more character, but that's my personal opinion. How you fit into this and how you fit into this development seems to have touched off some criticism that I would characterize as rather unusual from our staff. And that has caused me to really ponder this because of that. But, you know, how we work this out, I'm not sure, but I think we have to.
Um, the comment about industrial look caused John and I to look at each other, because that was, that was my picking up language that we got from staff as to, when we were trying to explain or try to, we were talking about what this, the whole development, what it look, what its look and feel was, is that it was intended to be kind of reflective of the airport and have an industrial feel. So that was me borrowing John's language, and, and that's a, that's a good thing, because that's a, that's a demonstration of our efforts to try to work together, to try to, you know, be talking on the same page about this project.
Sure.
But it is what it is, the use of metal is the use of metal.
Okay, other comments? Um, I guess my comment is shucks. Um, I really looked at this as being something that would be vibrant for these side, because I just think they, they need something right now to keep on going. I think the Target and the Home Depot have done very well, but I wish that there would have been some way that we could have fit this in. Um, cause I think it brings a, a different, a different, uh, dimension to the, to the site, and it, and it just makes it look vibrant, and it, and it makes it feel like it's really, really moving progressively along. Unfortunately, I think the round peg, square hole, or square hole, round peg, whatever you wanna call it, is, is kinda where it's at. And I just don't, um, I don't see this fitting in there. So I guess from the comp standpoint and from just, just from generally just trying to meet the dynamics of the whole site, I guess there's gotta be something better out there because this one just doesn't quite fit in there. Um, I haven't heard anything from you, did you have a comment relative to it?
They're not nice, so I'll just, I'll just reserve them for now and, and, and say we, I think we can do better, I really do.
Dennis, did you have a comment at all? Okay. Okay, um, with that, ask for...
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay. Okay. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, item number five is, uh, continuing public hearing, adult daycare at sixty-seven twenty-two Penn Avenue to July twenty-second, staff?
Uh, this is pretty simple. Uh, there was an application that's been submitted, it was incomplete at the time, um, necessary to prepare staff reports, so the public hearing will be continued to next month. We have received the outstanding materials, so you can expect that on the July agenda.
Okay.
I move continuance.
Second.
Okay, yes, motions are made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay, then on to Lea Sun Reports, Community Services Advisory Commission.
Um, I did...
City Council?
I have been paying attention, not, uh, too much as far as the planning commission goes, but a lot of big stuff coming up, including, um, Fourth of July stuff and, um, a loan for Pinnacle Airlines and, um, uh, those are a couple of big things. Oh, the, uh, the Lindell Gardens, that's all coming up.
Housing redevelopment?
I've got nothing for you.
Nothing for me. Richfield School Board, uh, no report. Okay. Transportation Commission?
No report.
Chamber of Commerce?
No report.
Okay, anything else?
I got, uh...
Yes?
Uh, let's see, uh, border stuff, uh, Mall of America, anybody been around there? There's a lot of stuff going on, it's amazing. And did you know that Toral is expanding down there in Lindell? Seventy-five thousand square foot, four-story office building. That's all I got.
Thank you, Susan, did you have something?
Yeah, I just have a real quick one, I just want to, I don't know who's still listening out there, but the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour is gonna be July thirteenth from one to five, and you can get your maps at all the liquor stores and community buildings, and we have nine beautiful gardens. This is, uh, we've been doing this since twenty-oh-three, and it's in celebration of the garden club's seventy-fifth anniversary. Somebody asked me if we still had any original members, I said, uh, they would be under the gardens, not on top, you know, it's seventy-five years, cause they started in nineteen thirty-eight.
Okay, could you repeat again, what date and, uh, times?
Yes, it will be Saturday, July thirteenth, from one to five. The maps are five dollars each, and they are up for sale right now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Um, a couple of questions. A while ago, we were approached, uh, by someone who wanted to put a restaurant in that small strip mall across from one where Lindell Gardens redevelopment is taking place. What is the status of that particular space? They haven't seen anything change?
Uh, the owner has permits and has been working on, on a restaurant.
When, when do they anticipate putting...
That I do not know.
Okay.
Uh, it, it did take a long time for a permit application to come in.
Okay.
Uh, but substantial work has been, has been completed, uh, so their permit remains valid and, um, but, but I don't have a better date for you.
Okay. Um, relative to business development, is there going to be a time when, um, Ms. Costello can come in and, uh, apprise us of what her position really is and what it will be doing and how it might affect business development that we may, uh, have come before us?
Um, yes, that's something we can take a look at, open dates on, um, work sessions and see when that could fit in. That's a good idea.
Right, I, I would appreciate that, cause I, I really, I missed, um, she presented to the Penn Central Group, uh, last week. I could not make that, I really wish I would have been able to do that.
Just for those of you that don't know, Christine Costello is a staff person who's been on staff for quite a, a long time, uh, but her position changed as of January first, and now her primary duties are, um, kind of to coordinate economic development activities and, and business assistance activities.
One, one other comment I'd like to make, I did receive the memo from, uh, um, uh, City Manager Devich, and, uh, tomorrow at the City Council, the Housing Visiting Task Force is gonna present its report, I'd like to encourage people to attend that.
Okay, was there any other meeting tomorrow? Joshua just kinda questioned, I thought, I don't think there was, but...
I just saw the website had a study session.
Right.
I didn't really buy it, I thought...
My guess is that the study session, um, the study session regarding the parking requirements and fire code and everything was, um, going to be continued, and that will take place Friday night.
My understanding is it was more focused on the, um, fire suppression issues and the, um, right-of-way dedication issues than on land use stuff. Now, you never know until meetings actually in a throes what, what's gonna be discussed, but we, we thought it was probably less planning commission oriented than the last one.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, yes. Are, are the findings of the Housing Visiting Task Force gonna be posted onto the website?
Yes, as soon as they, they present them to the City Council, then they should be on the next day, I think.
Great, thank you. Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.